Good evening, Eileen. Can you please open up the meeting?
Township of Howell Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, September 9th, 2024. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 11th, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and the rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note, this is, this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and on the decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barillo.
Here.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Roscoe will be arriving late. Mr. Stan is excused. Mr. Ryan.
Present.
Ms. Scottson.
Here.
Mr. Seiya.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Eileen. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Andy, can we have a swearing in of the professionals?
You swear the testimony of you will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you.
I do.
We state your names for the record.
Charles Conliff.
Jennifer Beam.
Your professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Item five on the agenda, approval minutes. Eileen, any minutes?
No minutes to approve tonight.
Item six, do we have any vouchers, Eileen?
No vouchers tonight.
Thank you. Item seven, Eileen, any correspondence?
I have four things for correspondence.
We'll take them one at a time.
Okay. Application BA 24-06 Turkish American Religious Foundation has requested to be carried to a later date with notice. They will be revising plans.
Okay, so for anyone that's here for application number BA 24-06, which is the Turkish American Religious Foundation, Inc., this application will be carried to a further date with new notice.
Correct.
Okay, next one. Well, they're gonna, we're gonna have to give them a new expiration date once they give new notice and then so forth. Go ahead, Eileen.
Application BA 23-18 Cranberry Road Holdings LLC has requested to be carried to October 28th, 2024 with no further notice. An extension has been granted to the board through November 30th of 2024.
Okay, anyone that's here for application number, case number BA 23-18 Cranberry Road Holdings, this application is being carried to October 28th, 2024 with an expiration date of November 30th, 2024 with no further notice. Next one.
Case number BA 2306 Gateway Industrial has requested to be carried to a later date with no further notice. And an extension, extension will be granted by Mr. Pape. Mr. Pape, I have November 4th available.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kenneth Pape, on behalf of the applicant Gateway Industrial 175, we made a substantial resubmission of plans approximately 10 days ago, and we are awaiting all of the reports. We, I think we received most of the reports. We do need time to work with your staff to address the reports. We also found ourselves as the application at the end of your agenda, and we're hoping to be moved towards the top of your agenda at a future meeting date. And for those reasons, we ask that it be carried. November 4th would work for us if it works for this board.
And you're looking to schedule a hearing to, to begin on November 4th, as we just said?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
And then an expiration?
The expiration date that we would grant would be as requested. Typically, I add 60 days to the date, so I would say to the end of December 2024. And such additional extensions as the board requires would always be granted.
Okay. Eileen, what do we got?
I have November 4th. If you approve, you can go first. Normally, I would put any carried applications to go first, but that's up to the board.
Well, here's the thing, Eileen. I'm going to be on travel for the next couple of months, so there's a few, I, I think this, this 4th is in jeopardy for me, December 9th is in jeopardy, and I think I told you that the, the 7th of October, right? Yes. So if Mr. Pape is good with me not being here.
I have a strong preference for the chair to be present, but, Mr. Chair, I think that, I don't think we're gonna finish in one hearing, it's a, it's a.
What's the, that's, the next meeting in November is the 25th, right?
Yes.
Yes. I plan on making.
I have nothing scheduled as yet, if that works for everybody.
Mr. Chair, if that's offered to the applicant, we take it. Acceptable, if acceptable to the board, and I would then make the extension to the end of January 2025.
Eileen, does that work for us?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, Mr. Pape. So, case number BA 23-06 Gateway Industrial 175 LLC. This application is being carried to a later date with further notice. We're looking at the next hearing being 25 November 2024 with an expiration of January 30, 2024.
Mr. Chair, I did ask that it be without notice, but I'll defer to your guidance if you require a notice.
You want it without further notice?
If you ca, if you make the announcement this evening, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, we'll do it without further notice then. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
You're welcome. Eileen, next one.
Um, all zoning board members are to complete the stormwater training. The directions in the video have been sent to your township emails, and just let myself or Eileen Rabano know if you completed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Do you have a list of who's still outstanding?
Uh, I don't, no.
All right. The, the, the remaining folks will get it done.
No quiz or anything like that?
No, I just wanna make sure I have, I'm putting it in my schedule right now, so I don't.
Okay, so Eileen, that does all the correspondence?
Yes.
Okay, resolutions before the board, case number BA 24-05, this is Jessica Basset. This is a resolution granting bulk C variances eligible voters Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Ryan, and Seiya. It's the pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Merton and Ryan, Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to applications before the board. What we have up is case number BA 2310 Royalty 19 LLC. This is a final major site plan. Application of Royalty 19 LLC as applicant owner seeking final major site plan approval to use an existing building containing 12,232 square feet of storage space and 837 square feet of office space with associated improvements in the ARE3 zone on premises known as Block 37, Lot 24.02, 19 Miller Road. Expiration date, 22 September 2024. Sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, board's professionals, staff and public. This is an application for final site plan approval of the property that is on 19 Miller Road. The board will recall that this application was presented earlier this, late last year and memorialized earlier this year for use variance relief and preliminary site plan. At the time that we were presenting the application, the board was actually considering granting final site plan approval. There was almost nothing open. We had filed the application as use and preliminary. We had not filed it for use preliminary and final, and because of that requirement, the board did not have jurisdiction to grant final. This evening, we have filed the legal notices for final site plan approval for this evening, and I can advise the board that the plans that were submitted for preliminary approval have not changed, other than there has been some technical additions that were made pursuant to the board's professionals. Prior to the meeting this evening, our architect confirmed with Ms. Beam that no further architectural testimony is required, and we have received the reports of Ms. Beam and Mr. Conliff. I'm going to ask if we can swear in Mr., if we can swear in Louis Zugner very briefly, just gonna ask that he confirm the accuracy of those statements and ask that the board take jurisdiction, and we're ready to proceed.
Jen?
So, I think the only reason that we didn't grant final the last time was because there was a question in the notice, is that correct, Mr. Pape?
Correct.
We're not waiting on anything. There's nothing hanging for me, I don't know about Charlie, but like, there, I have nothing outstanding.
Charlie?
Yeah, the only thing that we had outstanding, um, there was talk about resurfacing part of the roadway in front of the property frontage. I think the town has come through and repaved portions of the road. I would just ask that the applicant be required to repave the other half that has not been repaved by the township. Is that an issue, Mr. Pape?
We're amenable to that. What I'd ask is before we undertake the repaving of any portion of the road, we agreed to repave as directed by Charlie. I'd like to have a physical inspection. Our client has provided us with some evidence that the limited portion in front of his property is probably the only piece of the road that's not in bad shape, so just like to have it confirmed, have it inspected, and if it's required to be milled and repaved, then it'll be milled and repaved.
We're improving the site line, we're, the lights going in, we're filing Title 39, we're allowing the officers to go in the back, just, and the, the New Jersey Transit or Conrail, whoever owns that, if there's anything going on behind the property, we have it all taken care of.
All, all 100% addressed. I would hope, because Mr. Zugner is, actually, if Andy or Eileen could confirm jurisdiction from our notice package.
The board is jurisdiction, Mr. Pape.
And then ask Mr. Zugner to just be sworn.
Let's do it.
And have his brief testimony on point.
Okay.
You swear the testimony you'll give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you down.
I do.
State your name for the record, spell your last.
Louis Zugner, Z-U-E-G-N-E-R.
We accept your credentials, Mr. Zugner.
Mr. Zugner, you were the design engineer for this project, and it was your testimony as the engineer at the time of preliminary use variance, is that correct?
Yes.
You've heard my colloquy with the board and the board's professionals, that the plans remain the exact same plans, other than you're adding the technical requirements that were requested by the board and the board's professionals at the time of the prior approval.
Those are all correct.
Mr. Chair, we would submit to the board that we're, our application for final is consistent with preliminary, no changes have been made, and you've heard from your professionals that there's nothing outstanding.
Andy, the, you've already started to prepare that resolution, or do you have all the information you need?
I do.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Board members, any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
You should open to public.
Okay.
We're making a motion to open it for the chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Eileen, well, let's open this one up to public, please.
The board will now be open to the public. If you'd like to come up, state your name and your address. Thank you.
This is on case number BA 23-10 Royalty 19 LLC.
Motion to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen, we're closing the public.
Board is not closed to the public.
Okay, then what? Eligible voters on this one, Eileen?
I think it's final, so it's everybody, right?
I have everyone besides Mr. Roscoe and Mr. Stan.
Okay, good. All right, so then what's the pleasure of the board here, then?
Well, Mr. Chair, based upon, you know, the testimony and everything from the last meeting, and I would just like to make a motion to go ahead and approve the final site plan for this application.
Got it. We got a, a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
We got a second? Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya.
Yes, I look forward to reading this resolution.
The petition is approved.
It'll be one of the shorter ones.
Okay. Okay. So now, what time do we have? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have the next application, and I am waiting for my operations witness. If I could ask for a five to 10 minute recess so I can make a call and find him?
Mr. Pape, I believe your witness has arrived.
Oh, good. Now I just need to spend those five minutes with him.
All right, let's, uh, Eileen, the board's gonna take five minutes.
Thank you.
The board will now take a five-minute break and reconvene at 7:25.
Eileen, can we please open back up?
The meeting will now reconvene.
And let the record show that Mr. Roscoe has arrived.
Mr. Chairman, I think that just for the benefit of the public, we should probably let them know Fort Plains Partners is the only application that's gonna be heard this evening, other than the one that we just heard. So if you're here for any of the other applications on the agenda, it's not gonna be heard this evening.
Thank you, Jen. Mr. Pape.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals, and the public. Kenneth Pape of the firm Highland and Pape, on behalf of Fort Plains, this is a continued hearing. We began at your last hearing in August, and the board directed that the applicant return prepared to proceed, but with directions that the first witness that the board would hear from would be operations testimony.
Got it, so let me read it into the record then, sir. Case number BA 20-118 Fort Plains Partners LLC. This is a use in bulk variance to construct a one flex warehouse and one storage, self-storage building. Application of Fort Plains Partners LLC as applicant, and Fort Plains Partners LLC, Lot Point 6.01, and 1499 Holding Company LLC, lots 15.03 and Point 15.04, seeking use variance and bulk variance approval to construct a one-story flex warehouse with mezzanine office space and one four-story self-storage building with stormwater management systems on premises known as Block 137, Lots 6.01, 15.03, and 15.04, Fort Plains Road. This is a bifurcated application, as the applicant is only seeking use variance approval at this time. This application was partially heard on August 26, 2024, when it was carried to September 9th, 2024 with no further notice. Eligible voters are Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Ryan, Scott, and Seiya, and Roscoe. All right? And the expiration date is October 12th, 2024. Okay, Mr. Pape, we're back.
Thank you. The applicant is prepared to present one of the principals' testimony with regard to operations. A moment ago, I was told that I was not being heard in the back of the room. Am, am I loud enough now? Is it working? Blouse?
You guys move up.
It is one. They're connected.
That prism is a microphone, so it is recording, yeah.
When we were before the board and at the August meeting, there were a couple of questions that were raised, and say, some procedural items I'd like to address before introducing Mark Younger to the board. Mark is one of the three principals of Fort Plains Partners, and he'll testify to the operations. He is a developer and has been developing in the tri-state area for the past 25 years, including industrial buildings. The, there was a question about the sanitary sewer line that traversed our client's property, and whether that line had the capacity to handle the residential properties that could potentially become commercial properties along the Route 9 corridor east of our client's site. I was able to secure a copy of the ASBIL survey, and I will provide that to your engineers. It is an eight-inch line. The designer of the line was Peter Strong of Crest Engineering, and he said it has been designed to handle hundreds of residential units, and is substantially unused currently. It's a, it's a gravity line with a 0.3% slope. So, that sewer line is available to the public. It's large enough to handle the public.
And to the commercial businesses that are along the Route 9 corridor, just north of of this entry point?
So, it's, if you look at the wedge that's shown on that aerial, that's behind our client's proposed buildings, that's the area that.
It's in question.
It's in question. They, the line runs through our client's property and services currently, it services KFC, CME, and Chapter House, so the line comes all the way out to service those. It is available. Individuals would have to design their sewer line to get into it.
Got it.
But it's, it's a, it's a gravity line, and it's very substantial.
Thank you.
Second, just a reminder, that we, we've made the absolute commitment that the bungalows are coming down. The process of serving notice on the property owners is ongoing. It is not something that is, it is not a land use matter before the board, but the commitment that has been made by the applicant to the township is actively being pursued. The bungalows and will be removed from both sides of the street. Uh, just, we made that commitment, I wanted to repeat the commitment. And with this evening, our intention, as time allows, is to present Mr. Younger's testimony with regard to the proposed operation of the two businesses, self-storage and flex. Then to return to Louis Zugner, who has modified his exhibit slightly, he added some green areas where he was requested to do so, he's, he added a fence where we were requested to do so, we've modified the landscaping where we were requested to do so. And those are minor changes, but we, he'll go through those after his testimony with the board's permission. We'll then go to Erwin Keisel, who is the architect, who prepared the plans, go through the footprints and the proposed uses of the building, and also a little bit on the facade, assuming facade is mostly per site plan. The last professional witness this evening is our traffic engineer, Nick Vederisi. Mr. Vederisi will go through the onsite circulation and parking. The board will recall that the last witness is Christine Caphone, the planner, who, when we were carried to this night, announced that was not available, we would need to come back for one additional hearing for whatever remains and Christine's testimony.
Okay, and we're still gonna open to public tonight for the people that are
As you direct.
Providing information tonight.
That's, we find that, that's fine.
Okay, so when we combine all these lots together, Charlie, what's the size of this property?
You know it off the top of your head, Ken, I can open something.
I think 33 acres, just, just under 34 acres.
They have it in square feet on the plan, that's why I can't tell you.
It's okay, Charlie.
I think there's one other procedural item. The board will recall that we were asked to reach out to Shari for a landscaping plan for the portion of the property where the bungalows will be removed, and we did, and Ms. Spiro advised us that CME, the principals at CME directed that she is conflicted out from providing any further landscape guidance on this. It caught me by surprise, CME's property is up there in the corner. It's, I would like to explore, and not, certainly not tonight, the explanation why I don't have that plan asked for, but wasn't drawn. I'd like to explore with the principals at CME that the applicant waived that conflict. The last thing that we want to do is lose Shari Spiro, she has been working on this from day one, her knowledge of the, of the site is, is very deep. But we'll find out. We just don't have that answer this evening.
I have another question for Charlie. Charlie, the storage building.
Yes.
What's the footprint?
It is 36,645 square feet, and I believe that's just, that's in plan view, so it's also four stories.
Yes, understood, okay.
And then just to clarify, so the lot area, it's 32.2 acres, and, but what they're actually proposing to develop with the application is about 14 acres, so a little bit less than half of the, the property in total.
But all the property is going to be contiguous and joined together?
Correct, correct, but I'm just saying what they're proposing to develop with the application is just the southern half of it.
Got it.
Just, just over 14 acres.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Pape.
Thank you.
Let's get him some more in.
Let's get Mr. Mark Younger under oath, please. Mr. Younger, if you could stand.
Do you affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name for the record and spell your last, please.
Sure, if you wanna go there, that'd be fine. That might be a better mic.
Mark Younger.
And how do you spell your last name?
It's J-U-N-G-E-R.
The witness is sworn, Mr. Pape.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Younger, I'm gonna ask that you use the biggest voice that you can so that all can hear. I've introduced you as one of the principals of Fort Plain Partners, that's an accurate description?
Correct.
Yes.
And that have indicated that you have 25 years of develop, land development in the tri-state area, including industrial buildings?
Yes.
I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions, and then ask you to describe the proposed use of the two buildings. The first building is a multi-story building that, it, this is the building at the southern end, a multi-story building that's intended to be self-storage. Would it, accurate to say this is a climate-controlled, multi-story self-storage building?
Yes.
And is it, um, assuming that this board is, grants the use variance relief, and you return with site plan approval, is it your intention to retain either a regional or a national self-storage operator to manage the building for your company?
Yes, that's correct.
And the commitments that you make are commitments that you, as the property owner, make to this board and to the town, and any property manager who comes on board will be responsible for being, operating the business consistent with Seiya?
Correct.
Very good. I'm going to ask if you could confirm that there'll be no businesses that are conducted from the self-storage building?
Correct, there's no, yes.
Strictly, it's strictly storied, so nobody could come in here and operate a business, manufacturing, fabricating, assembling of any, any sort?
Correct, just the office for the, for the self-storage, they have a little retail store usually.
Let me ask you something. Jen?
Yes.
Facility like this, we have sprinkler systems, eh?
Oh, yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So, as far as utilities for the building, you would not allow there to be any utilities that a tenant could use, no electricity, no gas, no plumbing, that they could use, correct?
Correct.
There'd be lighting provided.
Correct.
And, and the building would be fully suppressed, but actual tenants, the occupants will not be able to use the space for any business purpose.
Correct.
And it's strange as this one sounds, no one would occupy or live in any of these spaces. It sounds strange, but it's happened before.
Correct.
Stipulate that doesn't happen. It's my understanding that you've explored hours of operation with, with businesses in the area, that you anticipate that the business hours would be between 6:00 AM and 10:00, and that would be the hours that individuals would have access to their, their, their storage facility.
Correct.
From 10 o'clock at night to 6:00 in the morning, there's no access at all to those facilities.
Correct.
You'd also have office hours, your office hours would be a lesser number of hours, typically something like 9:00 to 5:00, 9:00 to 6:00, something we could work out at a later date, but the office hours are less than the access hours.
Correct.
Individuals' access is either through a code or a FOB, you'd be giving individuals that kind of a control.
Correct.
And also, there would be, you would have, be able to monitor at all times who the And also there would be, you would be able to monitor at all times who the tenants are, which tenants are in the building and how long that they are there. Is that correct?
Yes.
So can I just jump in? And so what are you going to do if someone's there for a long period of time?
You'll have, we'll know who's there, we'll know when they come and when they leave. Then our next question was going to be, you'll have a security system so that you can monitor the hallways at all times and that, your security system would be on a 24-hour monitor?
Correct.
Right, so like my question is, I'm not understanding why that's important. So like what if I'm there all day? What, what does that mean?
We want to make sure that people are not there overnight.
Okay.
That's, that's the goal.
And then, and then Jen, like we did on Sunnyside?
Yep.
Same rules, right?
Yes, I mean, I have questions about four stories, which
Yes.
we have not allowed anywhere else.
Okay.
Um, and the, the need for four stories when there's a self-storage across the street at the jug handle, there's a self-storage at Regal Plaza, there's a brandy new self-storage that's being built at Sunnyside, there's also a self-storage a little farther to the north. I don't understand the need for four stories.
I'm just asking, okay?
And architect will be up shortly to go through building design.
Right, but operationally, why do you need four stories?
We've done studies that typical self-storage is between 100 and 150,000 square feet. And this is what we came up with.
So have you looked at the self-storage in Howell?
Sure.
And which, which self-storage is 150,000 square feet?
We did a, an independent study.
Right, I understand that, but I'm asking, have you looked at Howell? And if you, you said yes, so I would like to understand which self-storage facility in Howell is 150,000 square feet because I have yet to see that.
We're not saying that the others are. Mr. Younger's saying that...
I was saying that we did a study. And the study was selling us beneath the 100 to 150,000 square feet.
And I'm saying to you, okay, so where was the study? What were the parameters? What geographic parameters did you look at?
They, they usually do a, a study between three to five mile radius.
Okay, so I work in almost every town in Monmouth County, so I'm curious, where is there a self-storage 150,000 square feet?
If I may, if the size of the building is, is going to be a discussion point, we're prepared to have that discussion, but I'd ask if we could just do the operations testimony intact and then we can go to...
Well, I mean respectfully, Mr. Pape, I'm trying to understand why your applicant is proposing a four-story building. The architect designed it per, per direction from your client. So he's not going to be able to tell me why he designed it the way he did. He was just told to design it. So these studies that you're referencing, number one, we don't have them, right?
No, and, and...
And that's fine, I'm not asking for them, I understand they're proprietary. But number two, the studies, as you stated, said 100 to 150,000 square feet within three to five miles. I would like to know where there's a self-storage within three to five miles of this location at 150,000 square feet?
Uh, it, I'm sorry, it hasn't, the way, the way it works is institutional, they, they look at, this is what they need. It's not a question of what there is, it's what they want. I have to, as a developer, I have to try to accommodate that, you know, fulfillment to have between 100 and 150,000 square feet. Otherwise, I could build a self-storage, it's not going to be rentable or sellable down the road.
I mean respectfully, we have one that's going up currently that's way less than that, that's, it's under construction currently. We have one right across the street, they came back in for an addition. So I, I, I don't necessarily agree with what you're representing and four stories is beyond what we've ever approved here. So I mean, we can wait for, listen, we can wait for the architect, but I don't think he's going to be able to answer these questions, so...
We went by, based on the height restriction that we could go. Uh, the height restriction, we could go up to 45 feet, which gives us four stories. That's what we went by.
Okay, so I, I'm just going to put to the board, we have not approved anything at four stories anywhere in town. The only thing that's four stories currently is the fountains and that was a litigation settlement agreement that created a lot of, of pushback from the public. So I think you guys should take a look at it and reconcile the fact that you're probably looking at three stories.
For the moment, I'll say duly noted. And with permission, I'd like to go back to...
Let's go, Mr. Pape. Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
I think the material statement, besides the business ones that was just shared by Mr. Younger, is the maximum height that was permitted in the zone was what we used as a controlling factor, not the square footage of rentable space, but the, the, the height. But that, more on that later. So there, there are statutes in the state of New Jersey. It's amazing how specific the statutes in the state of New Jersey are on operation. It's NJSA, NJSA 2A, Code 44-187 at SEEK and it has the interesting name of Self-Service Storage Facility Act. There are considerable requirements on how to, how you operate and what would be in your lease. If you could stipulate on the record that the leases, whether they're your leases or a third-party management, will be in strict compliance with the statutory requirements of the town, of, of the state?
Yes, it will be a third party by any of the public companies and they would have standard leases.
Those rental agreements give you the, will give you the, the right to inspect a unit if you suspect that there's anything that's being stored that's improper?
Correct.
And those agreements will allow you to restrict the, of storage of materials so that there's no dangerous, hazardous, or flammable materials stored on premises, correct?
Correct.
No storage will occur anywhere other than in a tenant's storage area?
Correct.
So it's your goal to operate this as a traditional, regulated self-storage facility in accordance with the statute?
Correct.
Security systems would be developed with you, this board, and the third-party manager, including the 24-hour monitoring commitment that I placed on the record, would you affirm that that is a commitment that you were making to this board?
Correct.
Mr. Chair, we together went over all of these points. We also reviewed the transcript that we've made with you on the other application to make sure that we were consistent and addressing all the questions that had come up during that hearing. I'm prepared to go to the Flex building operation with Mr. Younger. Do you want me to stop here for the board to acquire that self-storage?
The board, do you have any questions for the self-storage? Yes, I have, you referred to "they" as far as determining that you need four stories. Is this, you have, anticipate what the, you're going to have that many tenants? Because as our planner said, this is excessively bigger than the other ones.
Like double.
So...
I know we're talking about three stories versus four stories, but we have to look at the square footage. Square footage is what drives this deal. And it's not about the stories. If you tell me, you know, you know...
Okay, no, I, I, I understand that. It's also the amount of square footage means there's going to be a lot more traffic. So you kind of put the two together, so that's why it's, it's getting a little hard to see, you know, this being a little, a little higher than the other ones, it's...
So usually self-storage actually is not fully occupied, even though they build them, they have the space, but usually it's like 85 to 90%. So even though it's built, it's, it doesn't make sense, but that's how it's done, the industry. So I would say that you could take off at least 10, 15% that can be vacant.
So, and I just want to clarify for the board too, right? So it's a math equation, right? If you were to reduce it to three stories, you could still get 100 to 150,000 square feet, just the footprint would have to expand, you know? So I mean, if they're saying that's the market analysis, that's what they need. If the issue is three versus four stories, they certainly could accommodate that by modifying the site layout, making the footprint bigger.
There we go.
Making it three stories. And just to give the board context, so the prior application that this board acted upon within the last couple of years was K-Land Corp., which is currently under construction. That was three stories, just over 73, just under 74,000 square feet. So, you know, that's what we've recently approved at the zoning board level for self-storage.
Charlie, thank you, because that's exactly, you know, the conundrum we're dealing with, right? Is, you know, the second building versus this building and how the two inner-operate and the size of it, you know, and what it looks like and how the intensity of use is going to be between the two of them. So, um, but yes, if you spread it out, brought it down a little bit, that means now it affects the other. So let's, let's go to it.
I, I, first of all, I, I don't know if it's my place here, but I'll, I'll say it anyways. Originally, this was designed as a three-story building, okay? And before the actual self-storage came into effect, actual zoning. At that time, we were told to do a three-story building and we had a bigger footprint where you see the gray area with the stormwater. The building was fully built, the whole thing, but then I guess engineers came back and said, we got to trim the building because we have to add, you know, more stormwater. So we had to figure out a way how to get more square footage. So it keeps on every time we come back to the situation, we get cut. Like same thing with the Flex warehouse. It was one building and we, we had to separate the two buildings. We cut from all sides, we took away a lot of area, we had other buildings designed, but we did that to accommodate everybody and to make sure that we could do this project. And as far as traffic, I mean, we did the extra steps of, even though it's not going to be officially the designated, you know, traffic entrance for the self-storage, but we did, we bought the easement from KFC so we could accommodate extra traffic so we could go in and out. Officially, it should be only used for the self-storage next to the entrance over there. That should be for self-storage and industrial, and the Flex warehouse should be for KFC.
Mr. Younger?
Sure.
That's where the rubber hits. If you separate and take the egress-ingress of the, of the self-storage and you block it off so that there's no movement between the two and then the other is dedicated to the outside, that affects the traffic pattern.
Actually...
Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, I'll hear you.
Yes, I, actually, I agree with you. Let's say there's a wall over there. And I think, and actually, it would be a good idea even because, so that we don't mix up. I heard there was concern about maybe a trailer or a tractor comes in from the other entrance, from self-storage going into the industrial. So we want to actually, no, it's not going to be an option. And as far as to have the traffic coming in for, for trailers into the self-storage side.
Charlie, Jen?
I mean...
It significantly changes this then, because now we, one is dedicated to one egress-ingress and the other's dedicated to the KFC ingress-ingress.
So I agree, but I think we should probably wait for Mr. Vetterisi to provide the traffic and circulation testimony in terms of, you know, his professional opinion before we opine on whether or not it works. I understand the concern, right? Because we don't want to mix the traffic and I know that we're getting to the operations of the Flex, which is of definite concern of the board, given the size of that facility. And whether it really operates as true Flex or it's just
Well, we'll get...
a warehouse and Flex closing?
We'll get to that.
Right? So I, I think we should maybe put a pin in the circulation and wait for the professional to provide the testimony.
Thank you.
And we'd be, Mr. Chair, Mr. Younger and his partners fully understand that this is a presentation and a dialogue. We anticipate presenting and hearing from you and hearing from your professionals. We anticipate that it is an active process. With your permission, strictly with your permission, I'll ask Mr. Younger to return to operations testimony and take him through the Flex building operations representations.
We'd like to, we're good?
Yes.
Wait.
As far as the monitoring, you said it's 24, 24 hours, seven days a week monitoring?
Yes.
Um, of the storage facility? Who is in charge of monitoring that? Because you say there's concerns that we want to make sure there's nobody actually staying there, so who's doing the monitoring?
There would be third-party, either, we've talked to regional and national companies. You know, when we did the K-Land, they went to extra space storage, a national company. There's a number of them. The number's getting smaller, they keep buying each other. There's numbers of people out there doing this, but we would bring in either a regional or a national to do the management. They also would manage the security. Our commitment is that there will be those elements and we'll fully develop it with you at site plan.
We don't have that, we don't have that in place yet.
No, no.
I would suggest, should the board act favorably on the application before you come back for site plan?
Have it.
You get that resolved.
Yep. That's how we did it the last time.
And the interior lighting, the storage facilities I've been in, and I'm sure they're all the same, when somebody walks in and they're walking down a dark hallway, the lights will just pop up, right? And they'll stay on for whatever. Those are timed.
Motion and time.
Motion and timing. I, I don't remember, are there windows in the storage facility?
Very little, just for, to show some doors.
Do you sort of, for the what?
Show the storage doors, like just as an advertisement, I would say, like a showcase.
Okay.
Think of the U-Haul where you can see that, from the front, there's glass so you can see the inside doors.
Right, so the lights going on isn't, won't be affecting people seeing from the outside?
Nope, zero.
Okay, thank you.
We're good? Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Ryan?
From the last meeting, Mr. Pape, I believe there's a follow-up from New Jersey Water. You were going to get some certification that you could handle the sprinkler systems for the, the buildings, right?
Mr. Zugner will be back up after Mr., after Mr. Younger will tell you how far we got with that.
Fair enough, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Roscoe, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I, I think just for the record, you should know that we did conduct a site visit and specifically walked on that site where the, what's, storage warehouse is going, the storage warehouse is going to be. We walked on both sites.
Make sure you use your mic.
For the record, we did do, we did do a site visit and walked specifically on the property where the storage facility is going to be and we also walked on the property where the Flex warehouse is going to be. So we, we do have some options.
So, and I, I just want to add some clarity too, because, you know, the board and professionals do acknowledge that there's been revisions numerous to this site layout. And I just want to point out that, you know, making the footprint smaller, the building necessitating it to make it four-story, you know, they're required to comply with the stormwater management rules with the design, right? So, you know, obviously they're trying to maximize impervious coverage on the site because that maximizes the operations of the site. But there's certain benchmarks that they need to hit with stormwater management, so changes to the footprint of the building and things like that, you know, at the end of the day, they have to comply with the stormwater rules and that's what dictates, um, you know, mitigates the size of the development to a certain extent.
Thank you, Charlie. That's why we all take our stormwater management training.
On that point, we as a team have been working on this project for seven years. And during those seven years, the stormwater regulations changed at least three times. And as this board knows and the public knows, your engineer is very precise about stormwater compliance. So we, although it's a use variance and not a fully engineered plan, there is a lot of engineering as far as stormwater, and I'm sure that Charlie would back that up, changed a number of times as those records...
Yeah, I, I just want to point out that it's not like, oh, we're making you put stormwater management above, beyond what's, it's, you have to comply with the rules and that's why things are shown on the plans and that's why footprints of buildings and things change. It's not like we're being, picking out one application over the other, it's, you have to comply with the towns and the state's stormwater rules.
As we've watched Howell build out over the last 30-plus years, we're grateful to the New Jersey DEP for continuing to revise, because every time we touch something, we affect somebody else. And so we're trying to mitigate all of that. Okay.
So we've got two Flex buildings that we're presenting to the board for their consideration. And there was some discussion about the, the size of the modules. And I know that working with your architect, you've come up with where one module is 24,000 square feet and all the remainder are between 8,000 and 10,000 square feet. Is that an accurate description of how the building will be laid out?
Correct.
There was also a, brought to our attention that the number of entrance doors, whether they are loading docks or overhead doors, is controlled by the ordinance. Now, we know that we're not in the Flex area, but we are looking at your Flex ordinance and doing the very best we can to comply with all of those elements. Did you authorize your architect to amend the overhead doors to be consistent with no more than one door per every 7,500 square feet of storage area?
Correct.
So reduce the number of doors and control the size of the spaces. So, reduce the number of doors and control the size of the spaces. The control is eight to ten thousand square feet for a module, with one module is only one that's at twenty-four thousand square feet.
Mr. Pape?
Correct.
Respectfully, your architectural plans are totally inconsistent with what you just said. There's a thirty-five thousand square foot space, there's a twenty-seven thousand square foot space, there's two twenty-four thousand square foot spaces, there's a twelve thousand square foot space, and then there's other smaller ones. So, if you are proposing something different, we don't have it.
We are...
And, and that is inconsistent with what we're, what we have.
They were revised, we were only here two weeks ago and we worked with the architect on an almost daily basis, and a revised floor plan that shows the demising areas as eight to ten thousand and one twenty-four thousand was only submitted today. Your professionals did not have that opportunity to review it, but we make the commitment and it'll be made on the record by Mr. Kizel.
So, I mean, like, that is absolutely not what I have. And I understand that they were submitted today, but not for nothing, what you've proposed up till today is totally different from what you're representing. So, do you have, so let me ask you this. Did you submit them as exhibits so we could see them on the, on the screen?
Yes, yes.
All right, so do you have them, John?
Mr. Pape, we're gonna need to take five on this.
Oh, okay.
All right, and then you'll start, you'll find the plans?
Do you want, you want the plans up, through his or, or Mr. Kizel's testimony?
No, no.
Want it up? Sure.
No, we need them up now.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Eileen, we're gonna take five.
The board will now take a five-minute break and reconvene at eight... Oh, five. Thank you.
But, they're supposed to submit it to them, not...
I haven't seen you.
This chairman and I are friends.
I don't know.
You have my... This is the biggest... You'll just let him know which one he should put on.
Actually, there's one more on one of the buildings that's bigger, but I'll correct, I'll just tell him that it was in the same. If you have a second one that's a little larger.
Okay. I'll tell him.
Very good.
There we go.
CC. Oh, CC.
So, you...
I know, Jen?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we have two good sites, we have two good... That's changing everything. What do you know?
At who?
Leon, L-E-O-N. S-A-V-A. K-I-A-N. I know, K-I-A-N.
I don't even have, it doesn't even come up. S-A-V-A. I'm a little slow today.
K-I-A-N.
K-I-A-N, thank you.
Dot com?
Yeah.
AOL dot net, that's...
AOL dot com.
I'll make fun of that, it's never gone down.
And by the way, I think some of these wasn't... F-four thirty. Well, they're not gonna finish tonight anyway.
You stay the course. It's a bad idea. Flex is more active than self-storage.
We're back.
The meeting will now reconvene.
We're waiting on Andy too, he's, uh... He's gonna get his seat. Okay, Mr. Pape, so you really, uh, you caught us off-guard there.
Oh, very sorry.
Well, six times thirty is one eighty, and what I'm saying is, thirty thousand, it was not Flex in our minds, and now you produce, your, your, your plans are starting to show that it is truly Flex, correct?
That's, the last time we were here, the expression about a Flex building that's try, that's really a warehouse building needs to be, we need to put controls in front of this board, and that's why we are here with these controls, yes.
Okay.
Make it Flex.
Because that affects the length of the vehicles and everything else, so, okay.
So, let me ask you a question.
Go ahead.
Has your traffic engineer revised his analysis based upon this change in the architectural plan on the type of vehicle?
Not in writing, but he's prepared to testify to these plans.
Right, but, I mean, this got submitted today at four-thirty, which clearly Charlie and I were not privy to. He's gonna change his report on the fly, like, at some point, you have to give us something.
Wait, Mr. Chair, points are, these are points well-made. When we were here on the twenty-sixth and the board was kind enough to move us to the ninth to continue, we used that time to do as much revisions as we could, knowing that we only had two weeks to work with, and knowing that there's going to be a third hearing when the planner testifies. I would ask that we'd be allowed to proceed, knowing full well that your professionals will need to do a deep dive into what was submitted to provide the board with full counsel, but we are prepared to take, take us through these presentations this evening, and I think develop an understanding with the board.
Developing the understanding is fine, as long as we're able to openly ask these questions and tell you what, the conforming versus the non-conforming construct is.
Mr. Chair, it is your meeting to run, we will follow it as directed. We're prepared, I think, to do, to give a, a lot of color and a lot of guidance as to what your applicants...
Thank you, sir. All right, so here we are, we're going now over to Buildings A and B, or A-one and A-two, or whatever you call them.
And do you want these, this plan with the square footage of the modules, do you want that up as, as he continues his testimony?
I want Charlie to decide which ones, you know...
Is this a formal exhibit now?
I think that's what they just submitted.
Yes, and I think so.
You should probably mark it.
Yes. We gotta mark these, Eileen.
These are in your packet as A-twenty-six, there's a collection altogether, they are A-twenty-six. The architectural plan is submitted with a revision date of nine-nine-twenty-four. So, why don't we just identify what page number of the plans? Okay. I, it would be, it would help if I could have our architect sworn, just so he could provide that guiding testimony.
Mr. Younger, patience.
You're up for swearing in.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Say your name for the record, spell your last.
Erwin H. Kizel, K-I-Z-E-L.
Mr. Kizel, would you share with the board your professional education background?
Yes, Mr. Pape. I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since nineteen-eighty-one. I graduated from Pratt Institute with a bachelor's degree in architecture in nineteen-seventy-seven. I, since nineteen-ninety-one, I've been with the firm of Jarmal Kizel Architects and Engineers Incorporated in Livingston, New Jersey.
We'll accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you. Your testimony at this moment, Mr. Kizel, is to tell on the record what the sheet numbers are of the plans as Mr., as Mr. Aguirre puts them forward. What are we looking at right now?
We are looking at Sheet A, one-point-one, and this is a Flex Building dot A-dash-one, and this is the first floor plan of that Flex Building.
Could we go to the second Flex Building?
The second Flex Building is labeled Sheet A, two-point-one. It, we're calling it Flex Building A-two.
I know that you got this plan in today, and I also know that you, you and I have shared that there is an error on the plan, if you could identify what the error is.
Well, the, the space in the lower right-hand corner measures twelve-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty-six square feet as submitted. It was our intent, except for the one space, to have all the units measure up between eight and ten thousand square feet, so it will be our intent to, uh, put a tenant, separate a demising wall halfway through the space so that it will be consistent of two spaces of approximately six thousand square feet each.
And this is the one sheet that shows the one large module of twenty-four thousand square feet?
That is correct, and that's to the left of that lower right-hand space.
What's the purpose of the twenty-four thousand square foot?
You, um, the purpose, oh...
If I may?
Yes.
It's called Flex Warehouse, and we want it to be flexible, and to give us a little bit of options, not just, you know, just in case we have a tenant that needs a little bit more than eight thousand square feet.
So, I think that's where the problem becomes, because in our view, Flex is not twenty-five thousand square feet. Flex is smaller, where you have a HVAC contractor or an electrical contractor that can't store their materials at their home, and they need five thousand square feet to store their materials. Twenty-five thousand square feet starts, starts looking like a warehouse.
We had gone over what we thought was the definition of Flex with our architect and also looking in the marketplace, and we were comfortable at twenty-four thousand square feet. If the board and the board's professionals are not, we'll take that piece of information home with us.
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead, Mr. Kizel.
May I ask a question of the professionals? Jen or Charlie?
Sure.
When we say Flex Warehouse, are these walls between...
We're not saying Flex Warehouse, we're saying Flex Space.
When we say Flex Space, are the walls that they build when they build this building originally permanent, or are they then adjusted depending on the tenants that come in?
So, technically, Flex means they can be moved flexibly, which is one of the reasons why Charlie and I probably would have required that there be a condition in the approval that the spaces know more than eight thousand square feet.
Okay.
Otherwise, the whole building can be used by one tenant, and then that equals a warehouse.
So, to give the board additional context, so we have approved previously on a couple occasions, Associates Business Park up on Oakerson Road. I think those two buildings are like forty thousand square feet each, and the tenant spaces are somewhere between five thousand and ten thousand square feet. Safe Light came in there going to one of those tenant spaces, so that is kinda what we look at as like a Flex Base breakdown.
I guess Safe Life, Safe Life's not coming to hell, then.
Technically, yeah.
Yes, they are, but not on Route Nine. Okay.
We're prepared to describe the businesses that we're, we're targeting. We had said eight to ten thousand square feet with one at twenty-four. I just heard Jen say a cap of eight thousand. I asked that the board consider us going up to the ten thousand square feet, but we'll take your message home, and we'll incorporate it into our plan when we make our final presentation. If I may, if we could go through who you anticipate are your target tenants? I know that we discussed this considerably. The target tenants, you've explained to me, are small contractors, the plumber, the con, the electrician, the HVAC contractor, just as Ms. Beam had suggested, the person who can't do it from his home but needs a, needs a space for his, for his equipment and materials. Is that your target tenant?
That's correct.
We also anticipate that there could be some light assembly, some fabrication or repackaging, and it's not uncommon for materials to come in on pallets, to be broken down into smaller packages in a Flex Space. Those typical uses that you would also target?
Yes.
You would, there's also a concern that was raised with regard to fleet vehicles, a very real concern, that there would be a large number of vehicles that could be on the property. We went over this, and you have a finite number of parking stalls. Would you share with the board your commitment that there'll be parking stalls that are dedicated to each of the tenancies? So, a tenant would have certain parking stalls that belong to that tenant, is that correct?
Correct.
And the only parking spaces that a tenant would be permitted to use, whether it was during the day or overnight, would be their own parking spaces.
Correct.
So, control over any fleet vehicles would be through monitoring the number of parking spaces that was available to that tenant.
Correct.
You would also allow a tenant, of course, to park a vehicle overnight in front of their overhead door?
Yes.
If you would also confirm... That there would be absolutely no storage outside of the building. No one's permitted to store equipment, no one's permitted to store materials outside of their rental space.
Correct.
Well, the, the overnight parking of vehicles is considered outdoor storage.
Okay. I, I, if overnight parking of vehicles associated with a business is outdoor, is considered outside storage, we would want permission for our tenants to be permitted to park their vehicles in their identified parking spaces overnight, and if relief is required for that, we're asking for it.
To clarify that, Ken, that's in the, you're saying in the loading spaces, or is that the parking spaces associated?
The loading space overnight and the dedicated parking spaces that go with the tenancies.
Yeah, yeah, I'll leave that up to the board's discretion, but I, we did have, I think the U-Haul came in, self-storage where they had shunting, and they like moved that to the side of the building so it wasn't in the front area.
Charlie, if you could, what was the restriction?
Go ahead, Charlie, lay it out.
So, that one, there was like shunting operations for the U-Haul, and they did not have that in the front yard area, um, and I think also there's been probably Planning Board application where there's a determination where parking of vehicles not in a parking space was outdoor storage and that was not a permitted use. Is that correct, Jen?
Yes, correct.
So, therefore, Mr. Pape, overnight vehicles are shunted in a specific spot, Title Thirty-nine. We go in, we make sure everything is being addressed and monitored correctly, and there is no overnight per se parking, just in any of the spaces or in front of any of the doors.
Mr. Chairman, this is valuable information about another application that came before the board. I need to go over it with Charlie to make certain I fully understand it. Our goal, we know that we will have tenants that will have, the small contractor's going to have the number of vehicles that he wants to park on the property overnight. We, we anticipate that. We wanna make sure that we've accommodated that. If there's restrictions on how, many, and where, we'll look to work that out.
Well, that'll have to be on-site somewhere where it's shunted on-site. In other words, approved, an approved, shunted area.
Understood.
And, and so, that's not on the plans right now, but that's something that would have to be.
So, and just to give the board additional clarity on that, right, so I, I believe the determination of the courts in that, in Planning Board application was that the storage or parking of vehicles overnight in a front yard area was not permitted. Uh, so Fort Plains is a technical front yard, so you have all the passenger vehicle parking along that, uh, Fort Plains frontage there. The loading zones are technically in a rear yard, so that wouldn't be something that would be, um, outdoor storage in the front yard area, so, but anything that's on the, I'm calling it the back, but it's really the front, 'cause it's Fort Plains is a frontage, so all those passenger vehicle parking spaces, if they were to park vehicles overnight there, that would be parking in the front yard area.
I understand.
So, might I ask a question? So, if they were to reduce the size of this building, could there be the possibility of them being able to shunt, you know, the parking somewhere else on the property, or is that still gonna be a problem?
No, they could if they reduced the overall size of the buildings or removed one of the buildings, yes.
Exactly, yep.
Um, I will say that this board has routinely required if there's storage of vehicles overnight, be put on concrete as opposed to asphalt based upon, you know, if there's a leak or something like that, and there are environmentally sensitive lands, you know, on this property, that has been typically the practice of the board, that they be stored on concrete in a designated area. So, you know, it's definitely something that needs to be vetted out and looked at more closely, but I think that, you know, we have, we need to get to the point where if the board is uncomfortable with the size and the scale of the Flex, we have not yet gotten to that point. But... a leak or something like that. And there are environmentally sensitive lands, you know, on this property that has been typically the practice of the board, that they be stored on concrete in a designated area. So, you know, it's definitely something that needs to be vetted out and looked at more closely. But I think that, you know, we have, we need to get to the point where if the board is uncomfortable with the size and the scale of the Flex, we have not yet gotten to that point. But if that's something you guys are thinking, we probably need to discuss that tonight so when they come back, they understand what exactly it is you guys are looking for.
Yeah, I think my bigger concern is not only the size of this, but also the fact that we're talking, I'm going to go back to the self-storage for a second because I meant to, I wanted to say something before, but I wanted to kind of combine it into this. You're looking at over, what, 150,000 square feet of that, plus this, plus the second building. You mentioned earlier that on average, 85% to 90% capacity at 150,000 square feet or whatever the size of the self-storage is, how, it doesn't, would you agree that the likelihood in the next three years of that getting anywhere near 80% is going to even happen? So you're going to have a building that could potentially be not usable along with the other space for a considerable amount of time? And that would, I would think, would be a concern with the board.
The boards certainly can have concerns with regard to the intensity of use, but it would suggest the board, marketability of the building and the economics of the building's operation are the problem of the tenant, not the problem of the board.
Yeah, but you're talking an exorbitant amount of space.
But the intensity of the use is something that is certainly within the purview of the board, just not the economics.
What are the sizes of the parking spots? Are they just for passenger cars, or...
I need to get Mr. Zogner back up. And we'll do it.
Okay.
They're, Mr. Murray, they're 9 foot by 19. That's what's required for ordinance for passenger vehicles, so you're not parking a box truck or anything like that. It would be probably fleet vehicles for a user, like if a plumber or HVAC had like technicians or something like that, yeah, they could conceivably...
A small minivan or pickup.
Yeah, exactly.
Thanks, Charlie. Okay, Mr. Pape.
Thank you. Get back to where I left off. And I think the last point that is going to be made is although this type of use you're anticipating, that it's the box truck, the van, that type of a vehicle, your engineers have been directed to design it to accommodate the movement of a tractor trailer, not that that's the anticipated primary delivery vehicle, but that, so that it's not trapped on site and can maneuver in and out of the site if necessary.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, that is the operation, the Flex Building operation that's offered by the applicant. All of these would be commitments that would be permanently associated with the property, whether it's managed by our client or by third-party management.
Okay. Charlie, can we see the first building again?
Mr. Aguirre's got the computer all over.
Mr. Aguirre. All right, so it's like 10 Flex Spaces, the 24,000 square foot area, the office area, all right?
Go back to that again.
See what the other sheet?
Second. So, Charlie, what's the front and what's the back of that building?
So, the shot, the lot is uniquely shaped, right? So you do have frontage on Route 9 when you get down towards where the self-storage is proposed, down by the Home Depot. But yeah, but you also still have frontage on Fort Plains. So for the sake of the Flex Space, the two buildings that are on the northern part of the site, I would say the front yard area is actually along Fort Plains Road. All the loading would be to the rear yard area, so the east.
Oh, okay, so those are parking spaces of the...
Correct, yeah, they're 9 by 19, which complies with the ordinance requirement. And then you can see the self-storage down on the end there. You got the one way in and out. That's also frontage on Route 9. So for that, the rear actually is Home Depot for that self-storage building, and then the front is Route 9.
But then you're saying that, not permanent, but if there were tenants that had fleet vehicles and they were living in the building, they wouldn't be able to leave them on Fort Plains Road?
Yes, yeah, so, you know, I think Mr. Chairman has brought this up on similar applications, right? You know, vehicles, depending on the user, could differ. You're going to fit a passenger vehicle in that type of space. You know, are there industrial complexes with Flex Space in the state of New Jersey where people are parking things with like trailers or tow behind trailers and stuff like that? Certainly, you know, requirement to have everything striped as fire lanes and compliance with Title 39 would help mitigate like a free-for-all throughout the site. And I think that's something Mr. Pape, the applicant, would be amenable to as a condition of any board approval.
Fire lanes to the satisfaction of this board and the fire chief, and of course, Title 39 enforcement on the site are acceptable conditions.
And just to follow up kind of where Charlie was going, you know, I've seen these Flex Base type buildings where you have like a landscape contractor running out of the, one of the tenant spaces, and all of their equipment is stored in the parking lot, which is landscape trailers, all kinds of things that are not going to fit in a regularly sized parking space, making it difficult for other tenants, let alone visitors to the site. So given the fact that you have literally zero oversized parking spaces, are you committed that like a landscaping business is not a tenant that you would entertain at this location?
It's not that it would be a tenant, but that any tenant that is a landscape business is not permitted to store equipment outside of their demise area.
Or they'd have to park inside the Flex Space.
That's what he just said.
Yes.
Right, but I mean, I've seen like Central Jersey landscaping where they have hundreds of vehicles, so they're not fitting it in an 8,000 square foot space. So it's been, you know, trying to maneuver through as other tenants, they basically take up the entirety of the parking lot because their vehicles do not fit in a parking space. They're a truck with a trailer attached to it, still attached, parked, taking up the entirety of the parking lot. So that's the concern.
In the land use business, I have learned that landscape contractors are constantly looking for a place to operate their business. They're, it's so hard for them. This is not a contractor's yard. This is a Flex Building, not a contractor's yard. And we can work out with the board and the board's professionals' language that assures that. That is the intention of the testimony that we just presented to you.
Mr. Younger, you good?
Yes.
Okay.
I have nothing further, Mr. Younger. He is available to the board and for examination if there's further questions.
Well, we'll do, Mr. Pape, is we'll hear the other testimony, and then we'll open up to public, okay? And so they could stick around for Q and A, okay?
No one's going anywhere.
All right, good.
Mr. Younger, thank you very much. Thank you. Then I'll ask that Mr. Zogner return that he present the revisions that he's made to the plan. Remind him that he has sworn and remind the board that his credentials have been made a part of the record. Mr. Zogner is the professional engineer responsible for the plans before the board. Mr. Zogner, if you could identify the revised plan that you submitted to, now this is a plan that also was submitted today, accordingly, the deep dive by your professionals has not yet occurred.
So, again, I believe it's marked as A 27. It's the colored site rendering. If you recall, I presented a very similar site rendering at the last hearing. This has just a handful of modifications to it. I know you've already been looking at it and seeing it for other reasons, and be more than happy to go through what we've modified here.
If you would, point by point, identify the modification, where it appears on the plan, and if there's a specific genesis as to why it was placed on the plan, please share that.
Certainly. So obviously, what we changed came out of what we had heard at the prior hearing. We evaluated and wanted to share these potential changes. It's not truly a plan change, this is just the colored rendering. First thing I would note, and this was really more on research, and Mr. Aguirre had helped us, there was a discussion on lots 10 and 11, which front on Route 9. And they are, if you can't read the numbers, they're central to our property, and they are joining land in a commercial zone. There was some question about whether those two had residences or not. And we did confirm they are indeed commercial lots. So the way we have shown and maintained the 50-foot residential buffer, we believe is correct on the plan, is accurate. But what it does bring into question, and I just would point out, there are 15 vehicle parking spaces that you can see now on our property. It's right near where the center angled Flex Base building is. And there's been some talk previously about that. Those 15 do conform to the 50-foot residential buffer, but we, it's not an essential number in our parking calculation, so we would really defer to the board. If there are objectionable in that location, we can relocate those spaces.
To the board or to the board professionals, if there is a planning reason why locating those parking stalls is not to your pleasure, as Louis just said, we can find another place for them. They don't have to be there.
Another element, we wanted really just to be clear in the colored rendering, it evolved a little bit. There's a space between the two Flex Base buildings. This is a 25-foot corridor. It originated with your fire chief had asked for 25 feet there. And when we'd shown that in a prior rendering, we'd shown it as paved, but through discussion with your professionals, it seems much more appropriate to be green space. It's not meant to be vehicle access, it's just meant to be sufficient separation between the buildings. So that is now colored in green, that would be green lawn.
And that would certainly prevent the evolution of that into becoming someplace where people are parking or storing things. So we felt that the green area was a good idea.
One other element, which I would say is probably not really something entirely visible in the rendering, but there was discussion, and I wanted to be clear, this application would have two monument signs, one for each of these leases, one for the self-storage would be at Route 9 on the lower right-hand side, one would be off of the rendering, but would be at the new access KFC as we came in. We did discuss this before, but we tried to find a way to show it in the rendering, but it wasn't really clear to be shown. But those two monument signs, and they would be individual signs, one for one use, one for the other use.
Jen? We pointed out that the one that's for the self-storage is on our property, the one that is on, that is for the Flex Building is on, within the easement and right-of-way that our clients have purchased over the KFC property. They have control over it, but they are not the record owners. They have the recorded easement and right-of-way, but not the record owners of the property. I think that would require a variance to have a sign that is not on the site.
Another item, and I believe a member of the public had raised this initially as a point, this does now reflect the idea of a fence. We envision it as a vinyl fence along the Fort Plains frontage, and we would see this from left to right going along the entirety of the development on Fort Plains Road, from where we have the emergency access, lower left-hand of our site here, to behind the Home Depot where our stormwater basin is, you can see in a dark gray sort of square shape. So providing fence along that length of the property.
We propose it to be six feet tall. We propose it to be vinyl. We propose it to be a six-foot vinyl fence, so it's not climbable. The issue that was brought to our attention is a tactic nuisance to the children who might want to use the asphalt areas for their sporting events or rollerblading. And if you could also, I think there was a discussion, oh, and that the fence would be located inside of the berm so that the fence would not be visible to the public, what would be visible to the public would be the berm and the landscaping. Could you take us through that?
Again, not quite at a site plan level, so this, you know, is open right now is aligned on a plan to construct a fence, but our thought would be that it could continue along our parking area so that it would provide the security and not be the main visual focal point.
There was also some suggestions from Shari, and I know that we gave Shari the permission to leave, so it's necessary to say that we do agree to work...
She conflicted out of this, so as of right now, she's conflicted out of the space.
Oh, right. But well, I think what you were suggesting, we talked about this, but you can see now this is reflecting that we would preserve trees in the 50-foot residential buffer where they're adequate, construct a berm and landscape it where it's insufficient. This plan also reflects a change in the number of overhead doors. That had come up previously. So while it's not necessarily the permitted use in this zone, we were trying to follow your Flex Base ordinance from other zones, and there were too many overhead doors. So that number has been reduced here. It's actually reduced, it was 18 and is now 16 overhead doors.
And those are the revisions made on the variance sketch.
Wait, 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 wait. You're showing us 10 Flex Spaces at 10,000 square feet? That's 10 doors.
No, your door control is 7,500 square feet per door.
Yes, but so where are all these roller curtains going?
Need Irwin to come back, but there are some spaces that would have more than one door.
I'd like to see that.
And then if I...
Sure, Mike. One other element, this had come up previously, I had heard, we had looked into a little further the water line that's in Fort Plains Road and that would provide water service to the site. Clearly, at this point, we haven't designed and the building hasn't been designed for fire suppression, but it's a 16-inch water main in Fort Plains. There actually is a water tower at the corner of Fort Plains and West Farms. We do know that the flow and pressure here are strong. We've spoken with New Jersey American. It would have to be fully designed, but the flow and pressure for fire suppression are very good here. There's certainly be no reason for a tank on the site or anything like that. Whether a building needed internal fire pump, that seems unlikely to me here, but there's always the potential it could have a mechanical fire pump in the building, but I think that's unlikely.
Could you describe the type of test or study that New Jersey American Water will do when we ask them to confirm that the water pressure in the line is acceptable?
In fact, we actually have asked them to do it, but they will do a flow test in a number of locations nearby in order to determine the actual flow and pressure closest to the site.
And you've initiated that?
We have made that request.
We would stipulate to this board that at the time of site plan, that detail will be provided, and the assurance is that there is a water supply sufficient to provide a suppression system in the proposed buildings exists at the site. Do you have anything further this evening?
I do not.
Any board members have any questions?
Mr. Zogner, could you just tell us where the fence begins and where it terminates on the drawing?
Yes. So if you look along the, we talked about the vehicle parking side of the buildings, the bottom of the plan, it would be on, below the curb, in between the curb and the berm and landscaping, and from left to right, other side of the building.
Other side?
We would have it from the emergency access, where we see the gate, and it would run, you can see little X's and dashes, and would run along the back of the curb from that emergency access lane to, if you scroll to the right on this plan, to where we have a stormwater basin between our two buildings.
That's the location that we propose. If your board, if the board or your professionals believes that it needs to be tweaked or modified, we're looking for that guidances as well.
I think a member of public, when they mentioned the fencing idea to keep the kids out, said the access gate wasn't going to be sufficient alone. So just going to one part of the access gate and not coming off the other side, I don't think accommodates what they were trying to achieve by having it fenced.
We go back to the sketch, is that in?
I believe I understand what Mr. Ryan is saying, is that we're bringing it to this gate. It should be integrated into the gate and then continue, we can't continue all the way down the length of the property, but there's a retaining wall there. It could continue to the retaining wall to the left of our property and would put a complete barrier that you couldn't get around.
That would be probably...
Does that sound correct?
That would be wise to do, yes. Thank you.
Is there fencing along the back? Is there fencing along the back, behind, at the top?
Towards Route 9? We have not proposed fencing on that side. We have not proposed fencing on that side.
Is, don't we run into the same problem with kids walking off Lot 12 or Lot 9 or 10 or 8 or coming down that driveway there, coming into the, into the development?
I defer to you, but we have hundreds of residents immediately across the street from Fort Plains. I think that was what we were asked to create a barrier to defer to you. I don't know.
Are all these lots commercial?
Yeah.
Yes.
All of them are commercial, Jen?
They're zoned commercially. There may be some remnants of residential historic.
I think they clarified that.
John helped us out. They're all, they're all commercial. Or falling apart and unoccupied.
And while we're on the topic, so that driveway that's going to be brought into the complex from the top there, what, what does stop somebody from walking along that to get into the?
Nothing prevents someone from walking in.
Mr. Pape?
Yes, sir.
So this brings us to, and this is where the dialogue starts, right? Jen, Charlie? The public storage is going to be fully gated and closed in, correct? Otherwise, how would you stop folks from getting in there? And if you segregate the public storage from the flex space and you have dedicated entrances and exits from the two spots, that changes a few of the things here with regards to the flow of traffic, which we're going to hear, right? But it also, you know, changes the aspect of what you're going to fence and what you're not going to fence and how you're going to fence.
Security is the building.
So, Mr. Chairman, there is no planned defense in the self-storage building at the moment. All the storage is internal to the building, so the security of the building is the building itself. Would not, not be our intent to fence that.
It's not like it's a campus where you have multiple doors going into the building. There's controlled access to the building.
So does a roller curtain door go up when you drive in? Does the public storage, well, I'm assuming it's elevator, right? It's not that you're driving up.
No. There's a main door to come into the building and freight elevators, so people would have access in a main door to bring in pieces. There are overhead doors at the first floor only along the backside of the building.
So how do you stack when you have multiple tenants that are trying to get to their, the traffic engineer? I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker. Well, I'm just, so you're clarifying there's no fencing going around the public storage? Okay. And we have the commercial property that's all a bait, you know, a touching, yes. And we're not going to go ahead and we're going to just use the natural forest area to be the, the security boundary for that side of the property. Is that correct?
It's, I would say, up for some discussion, but that suggestion came to us to preserve those existing trees, and hearing that suggestion, I agree with it. Those are nice, mature trees in that, in that section of what would be the 50-foot buffer. They're, they don't appear thin or easy to see through to me. They, it seems like a solid buffer.
But you want the fence to be at a greater length in that direction? We're looking for your guidance. We'd like Mr. Ryan's guidance at the north end. Some need at the southern end. Please share that with us.
Mr. Chair, I think your suggestion, even though they were not proposing, is that you want the uses separated on the site. If they're using two separate access points, we don't need the flex traffic intermingling with the self-storage traffic, correct?
Correct.
So I get you don't have it separated now, but I don't understand the point of having it intermingling, they're two separate and distinct uses.
Is it the, the point that was just made, is it the board's preference that these two uses be physically separated from each other?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
That was kind of my point before.
Yeah, I mean, we got to decide if you're going to be dividing it or not tonight. And I think our feeling is we should have it separated.
Well, more testimony from Mr., from Nick that we'll place on the record, but looking for your, we're looking for your position in perspective. I have nothing further of Louis.
Anything for the engineer?
Just getting back to that, I don't know if my question was answered or maybe I wasn't paying attention. So that north ingress egress, where we're going to make that driveway coming off of Route 9.
The KFC.
By the KFC that's coming into the, into the development where the flex warehouses are. What's going to prevent kids on their bicycles going into that space on, during non-business hours, over the weekends?
We didn't see that as an issue. If you see it as an issue, we'll, we'll see if there's an answer, but you know...
I mean, technically, you're not allowed to ride your bike on Route 9. And we don't see a lot of kids riding their bike on Route 9. They're not allowed...
I mean, not use the bicycle. I mean, kids can walk onto, I mean, I think we should be considering people just moseying onto that property.
I don't know where they'd be coming from.
I don't either. I mean, people that are walking on Route 9 are going to the bus stop. They're not just like meandering, and we're not in a neighborhood. We're talking that driveway goes directly out to Route 9. So you're not talking about an area where you're going to have people just meandering. They don't do that. That's not how that works. They are literally walking to the bus stop up by Home Depot, if they're walking at all. But those that are walking on Route 9 are going to the bus stop. They're not just like, let me see what's down this road. That's not what's happening on Route 9. I don't really think that that's a legitimate concern.
We could put signage up that says no pedestrians, those signs, no skateboarding, no bicycling. We could put those signs up, and private property will be enforced, Title 39, all of that message can be there. But I, I appreciate Ms. Beam's comments. I think that it's, it's not a concern that we had.
Mr. Hughes wants to say something.
Yeah, no, I would just say that, you know, the concept would also go down to this other entrance, really.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. But this would go down to the other entrance too. So I mean, if someone, you know, I get what everybody's saying about that, because if they come up this road, they certainly could go into that other entrance and wander, but I agree, there's no one walking there, so.
It's not the same, but it's similar to other commercial uses up and down Route 9 where...
So they're safe to assume there's a site manager, their site manager's got cameras monitoring who's coming and going and...
All of which we commit to and all of which would be developed with you at site plan.
Any other question?
Yeah, with the security, we probably have outdoor, I mean, I know that's probably operational, but that would be 100%, correct?
100%.
So I guess that's another way to control if...
Cameras, is that what you're saying? Yes.
Yeah, outside, yeah.
Inside and outside cameras.
Mr. Roscoe? Okay, Mr. Ryan?
Good. Answer my questions.
Emily, you're good?
I'm good.
All right. Is that all?
Good.
Okay. All right, Mr. Pape, we're good. Professionals, you're good?
Yes.
Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I only need three minutes to speak to the next witness. If we just take a very brief break.
The architect we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
We just have a brief break to speak.
All right, we're taking five minutes. Eileen, we're taking five minutes.
The board will now take a five-minute recess and reconvene at 8:52.
Thank you. Eileen, we're back.
The meeting will now reconvene.
Yes, sir.
So we have Mr. Keisel in front of us, correct?
We have Mr. Keisel in front of us. His credentials are before the record and he's under oath, and he is prepared to present his architectural treatments and floor plans to the...
I'd like to see the 16 sliding overhead doors.
We don't have that.
Well, how do you, how do you, speak on the record, please. How do you, how do you account for?
Well, I could explain it by looking at the plans.
All right, let's do it.
So, and I may, my eyesight may, I'll look at that plan and you folks could look at that plan, although, so.
This is what we're calling the A2 building that you're looking at.
Nobody could see or hear you. And the, and the board, if you're pointing to that one, has no idea what you're pointing at. Let me get my, my sheet sheets here.
Tell us what is up in front of the board right now.
What is in front of the board right now is sheet, for this presentation, sheet A2.1. It's building, it's, we call this building A2. So let me, I'm going to start from the left and work myself to the right. This building is approximately 73,000 square feet. That includes the mezzanine. There's a mezzanine that runs across the front of the building for offices. But to address specifically your point, the first space on the left has one, one drive-in bay, and that's the... Other, other side? That, that, that has one drive-in bay, and that's the rectangle to the right. Exactly. That's the first space. The second space on the right side of the dotted line has one overhead door. The space to the right of that, on the other side of the dotted line, has the third overhead door representing the third space. To the right of that, there's a darker line. Please note that there's a change in elevation between the first three spaces and the space on the right. So this building has three different floor levels. So it's really virtually impossible to have this building combined because it has three different floor levels, and a tenant will never want to have a space with multiple levels in it. So to the right is that space that we were talking about before, you know, the large space of over 20,000 square feet. That space can be further subdivided based on whatever prospective tenant comes along. That space has two overhead doors. That would be door number four and door number five. The reason they are different sized doors is we just, you know, we give them one higher door in case they want to bring a high element into the space. The door to the right is a lower door. So those doors are the first five doors in this space. Now, if you can please slide the drawing to the left, exposing the last two spaces. Now, the space in the lower right is, we apologize, I apologize for the mistake, but that was intended to be divided into two spaces, equal spaces. That space has, and that's a, that also is on its own floor level. That has two doors. It has the door, the rectangle on the lower right, which is a dock height door, and the door right above that, which is a drive-in door. That large, long rectangle is a ramp that a vehicle can drive in and unload within the building. Now, above that rectangular space, there's a, there's an odd-shaped space that's also intended to be a, you know, a flex space, but it does, that one in its present configuration does not have an overhead door. So it had, it will have two people doors, and it may have an overhead door, but that would have to be refined later on in, in the process. But that's a relatively small space. And again, the intent is that there will be, none of these walls are load-bearing walls, but the intent is that there's going to be a tenant separation wall at three locations in the building with the floor plans changed level. We don't anticipate any tenants spanning from the higher level to the lower level or vice versa. Anywhere else in the building, there can be a tenant separation wall erected, and when that tenant leaves, another, and, and someone larger or smaller comes in, it could be reconfigured. So that is the character of this building, and then again, we took into consideration the board's comments from the previous meeting. They wanted smaller, you wanted smaller scale, and this was our effort to creating a small, smaller scale flex building that can accommodate small businesses.
So I think earlier, we asked if the applicant would be amenable to putting a cap on the maximum square footage of the tenant space, which I think Mr. Pape said 10,000 square feet. Is that correct, Mr. Pape?
Yes, yes.
So those walls are going in and, you know, you're not going to get two spaces because that's going to be way beyond the 10,000 square feet. So they're going to be what they are, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, they, yes. The short answer is yes.
So, and that is going to hold true for that 25,000 square foot space as well, correct?
We, we heard that you, that 25,000 square feet exceeds what you consider to be flex. We need to break that down into smaller spaces.
Great.
Okay, so that's seven doors on that one building. Let's take a look at the other building.
Okay. So we will now go to the sheet, the previous sheet, which is labeled A1.1. This is, this is simpler. This building is depicted, presented as seven tenant spaces, all under 10,000 square feet, close, more closely to 8,000 square feet. It has two floor levels due to the slope of the site. The first three levels are low, the next, first three spaces are low, the next four spaces are high. So again, starting on the left-hand side, that space has a drive-in where the arrow is, that has a drive-in bay, and then to the right of that, it has a loading bay, which is a loading dock height bay. The next space...
How many square, I'm sorry, if I can interrupt. How many square feet is, is that space? That first, that first, that first, that first flex?
The first space is 8,272 square feet.
And you have two loading docks?
Two loading docks.
All right, so, but as Mr. Pape said, you were trying to go along with the flex space, as it says in our ordinance, and the ordinance says no more than one loading dock per 7,500 square feet of flex space.
We, go ahead.
We took that as the totality of the square footage of the building. So we divided the total square footage of the building by 7,500 square feet, and we came up with 9. something. So we knew we needed less than, we knew that if we had nine spaces, nine loading spaces on the bill, within the building, that was less than one per 7,500 square feet. If you want, if you interpret it to mean that one space of less than, you know, one space of 7,500 square feet or less could only have one loading space, so, so be it. But we took it as the aggregate square footage of the building to make sure that we don't have more than one percent.
So to clarify, I think, and Jen can chime in if I'm speaking off-base here, but I think the intent of the ordinance, right, the, where it is a conditional use in the HD1S, right, there's a maximum cap on the gross floor area of flex space. I think it's like 75,000 square feet, right? So when you calculate the one per 7,500, it's not taking the totality of building A1 and A2, and it's this square footage and divided by the number of loading docks, we comply, right? Because a loading dock in A1 at the far end unit can't service a tenant space over in the other end. So it would be comply the one per 7,500 for building A1 based off of the total gross floor area divided by the number of docks, and then building A2 comply with that same requirement. It's not one building and we have this loading space that's servicing all tenant spaces throughout both buildings. They're two separate buildings, and you need to comply with the one per 7,500 for each building independently.
Is Erwin's interpretation correct for this building?
Is Irwin's interpretation correct for this building, or wrong?
Wrong.
No, so from what I'm understanding, he took the overall square footage of both buildings and then-
Of each building individually.
So, I'm just gonna lay it out there. One loading dock per space, period. That's what we're gonna look for. You don't need two for eight thousand square feet. That's ridiculous. So, one per. The, I don't understand why you didn't make both buildings rectangular, but that's your design, and so that one space doesn't get a loading dock, oh well, but you don't get to, to slide it in somewhere else. So, one per, that's it. So, that's gonna have to be redesigned. And honestly, we're gonna have to work on this architecture regardless because the renderings are not gonna fly at all. They do not comply with our architectural requirements. You don't have fenestrations, you have no water table, you have no vertical breaks in the building, and so, all of these buildings are gonna need significant architectural changes, so we can work on that, but the way that they're designed right now is not gonna fly.
We will work, we understand and accept what you're saying, and we will work within the ordinance to satisfy the architectural requirements of the town.
Which is basically me, so I'm just letting you know that if I say no, you're gonna have a problem. So, what I'm saying is, is that there are very specific requirements that we require, and we have been very flexible with those requirements, understanding the usability of the internal space, but what you have right, I mean, I'm looking at the screen right now, it's like a blank wall with some loading docks. That's not gonna work. So, we're gonna have to, if the board even acts in the affirmative on the application, which I'm not opining one way or the other, if we get over that hurdle, there's gonna be significant architectural, architectural changes that need to be made to these buildings.
I am happy to personally work with you to make you satisfied with the architectural design of the building.
Hey, Jen, while, while we're just on this, um, since we're kinda going off this ordinance for the HD three flex space, where it is permitted, not permitted here, says, um, "No building containing flex space shall be larger than seventy-five thousand square feet in area." What is, what is the spirit of that? What, what is the intent? Is it, is the intent that should have one building?
That, no.
Okay.
But the intent is that we don't have people coming in with a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square foot flex building, which ultimately is a warehouse. That's the intent, is to keep it small and manageable so it actually does act as flex, because, and Mr. Pape can attest, we have another municipality where we have someone coming in with two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet. There's a tenant space carved out at one thousand square feet and two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-nine square feet, a, and that's considered flex. No, that's a warehouse.
That's not my application.
No, it's not his, or, it's not his application, but he's familiar with that application. So, the intention of keeping the maximum square footage low is so that it actually functions as flex, and people don't come in and say, oh, it's flex space, and then it winds up, you know, being operated as a warehouse. That's the intention, because warehouse space is usually way larger than seventy-five thousand square feet.
So, if you had, hypothetical, if you had three-hundred-thousand square feet, you had, you can break it up into four seventy-five thousand-
Yes.
-square feet house, okay, thank you.
So, since we're talking about square footage, the A one building is, has a footprint of sixty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-five square feet. And then it has a mezzanine of eight thousand eight hundred eighty-six square feet, which is intended to be office conference rooms and so on and so forth. The total building area is seventy-one thousand eight hundred seventy-one square feet. That's just for the record. The clear space inside is approximately twenty-six feet eight inches, and, um, like, I want, just, this, this subsequent comment applies to all the buildings. They're all of non-combustible construction, they're all fully sprinkled, and they're designed to comply with the latest code requirements, both environmental, you know, and, you know, electrical and so on, to conserve energy and so on and so forth. So, they're all intended to be very safe buildings, and, uh, you know, that, that would, that, you know, that's a summary of, of every building. Now, if you could go, the, the second, what we're now calling building A two, and by the way, we split these buildings based on the comments of the board at the last meeting, the idea being to reduce the scale of the building. The second building, which is A two, if you could go, please, to the next slide, just for the record. The footprint of that building is sixty-six thousand one hundred seventy-three square feet. The mezzanine area-
You need the next building, correct?
Yes, if you can go to the next slide, please. That's it.
Thank you.
The mezzanine area is six thousand nine hundred eight square feet, and the total, if my arithmetic is correct, is seventy-three thousand zero eighty-one square feet.
I'm sorry, what was the flex area, sixty?
Sixty-six thousand one seventy-three. Now, the number of overhead door, loading doors in this building are somewhat disproportionate. This building has seven overhead doors. Space one has one, space two and three each have one. The larger space, which we're gonna make smaller, has two, so we could put a wall down the center, reduce the size of the space, and like I said, the space on the lower right will be divided, each one will have its door, and this, the current space, that angular space above it currently has no loading doors. So, that is the way the building is configured. With respect, you know, their setup, they will be individually designed based on the prospective tenant, but they will have restrooms and a stairway to the, to the floor above. A veh-, a vehicle may either back up to the loading doors, may either drive in, or i- if they don't have to, you know, load or unload, they could take the stairs up from the rear of the building into the individual space. And like I said previously, this building has three floor levels, uh, the lower on the, on the left, the medium on the right, and the higher to the right of that.
Do each of the spaces have exhaust fans? You're saying cars can drive in?
Well, i- if the space is, each space will be designed based on the tenancy. If it's gonna be, if it's gonna be used as a drive-in space, it will have a code-compliant exhaust system.
Thank you.
The mezzanines are on a second level, there's stairs to get there?
There will, the mezzanines are on the second level, correct?
So, there's no handicap access to those?
There is currently no handicap access to the mezzanines, uh, under the Uniform Construction Code. If a mezzanine is less than three thousand square feet, it doesn't need a handicapped access, but the code does require that if there are employee spaces on an inaccessible mezzanine, such as what we might have here, the same spaces need to be duplicated on the floor below. So, if there were a, a, a employee, you know, lounge and kitchenette on the second floor, the tenant would be obligated to provide a similar space on the first floor.
Okay.
So, for this building, A two, so you have H, J, and K, right? So, each one of those mezzanine will have a separate mezzanine space with its own access, so they'll definitely be under three thousand square feet.
Correct.
How about for flex space L, where that's one long mezzanine space there?
Well, if it's, I, I don't, I don't know if I have the square footage of that mezzanine, let me, um-
We're also gonna be breaking that up.
Yeah, we'll be breaking that space up, so it's, it's gonna be under three thousand square feet.
Okay, but in the event that it was one tenant space, you'd have to provide separate on the first floor that's ADA accessible and has all the same services and all that kinda stuff. Okay, thanks.
But in any event, this is all mandated by code. We have, we will-
You build it for minutes and all that.
All that's information, yes.
The height of these buildings?
The-
Well, start with A one, what's?
The height of the building is, is thirty-seven feet six inches. It's, it's misleading because- Because you start with the average grade plane around the perimeter of the building, and then you take that plane to the highest point of the building. So, where the building steps up, so it's measured from the lowest floor on the left, from the lowest grade plane on the left to the highest point on the right, and that ends up being thirty-seven feet six inches. But in reality, each individual segment is lower than that, so the roof will step, and the clear space within the building is approximately twenty-six feet eight inches.
That's, uh, that's acceptable.
Twenty-six feet eight inches.
Clear inside the, approximately clear inside the building.
The definition of height that creates that thirty-seven, six, it's not, if you actually, there, that's a, you can-
Yeah, so, so to, right, so the site has a significant amount of grade change, so there's different tenant, or different, uh, spaces, like in A two where it steps down three spaces. So, on the one side of the building, you could have a four-foot water course, you know, to where your building slab actually is. On the other side, it could be flush with grade. So, when we do calculations for a building height, you take all four corners of the building, you find the average, and then that's what you measure your height from. I think what he's saying, the twenty-six foot eight, eight is from the building slab interior to the building. To the top of the flat roof is twenty-six foot eight, and then they've got another three and a half foot plus or minus parapet above that for mechanical screening and things like that.
And we're measuring it to the top of the parapet.
Correct.
So, it's twenty-six feet?
Inside, inside.
Inside.
Each one of those, yeah. Each one of those buildings.
Okay.
Okay.
So, would you like to hear anything more about these two A one and A two buildings?
Actually, I do. So, back to the, um, the twenty-four thousand space, being that that has to be reduced-
Right.
How are you planning on putting bays, especially with the angles and everything you have going on there?
Well, I, I would basically divide the space in three. You know, the walls can go anywhere, and, uh, we'll, we'll divide the space in three and put a wall-
No, what I mean is, you have bays going into each one, so, or you have two bays currently in the twenty-four thousand, it has to have three. What are you gonna do with the, how is that gonna be done?
It has a maximum of three.
Maximum of three, okay.
So, we will-
So, if you do two.
We will take the space, we will take one of the, we, we may add one, we'll, we may have to add, we're gonna have to add a garage door to this building, but it will still be underneath the twenty, the seventy-five hundred square feet. We're gonna create three spaces in the large space, we're gonna add an overhead door there, and we're gonna, and we're gonna need the two overhead doors, the two loading bays in the lower right-hand space. So, we're gonna have, instead of seven, we're gonna have eight. By, by rule, I believe we could have nine, so we're still gonna be under the required number of spaces.
Mr. Ryan? Are you good, Amber?
I'm just trying to figure out how you're fitting it with that angle there.
That angle doesn't, you, we're, we're not even-
Is that able to be fit, like adjusted?
That angle, you know, that's why we get paid the big bucks to figure out the angles, but no, um-
I gotta ask you.
We'll make it, we're gonna make it work.
Mr. Roscoe?
But, but there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of additional, as you may have heard from your planner, there's gonna be a lot of additional work put into the design of these buildings. The point being, we're gonna stay under, no more than one dock space per seventy-five hundred square feet, and, uh, we'll make, we'll make it work in accordance with those requirements.
Steve?
Charlie, Jen? I know that Mr., I know that Mr. Kaiser has the elevations designed for presentation. I did hear Ms. Beam's comments. Could we briefly present the architecture just to hear the board's visceral response, or not?
I would leave it up to Jen.
Understood.
I mean, it's gonna look vastly different if the board is actively here before they come back, so I don't know. I mean, it is very plain.
Consistency and continuity within the town.
I think Mr. Pape wants to punish me, you know, by-
No, I don't wanna, you know, Mr. Kaiser, that is, although, although Ms. Beam's opinion is very valued by everyone in the building-
You can see the wall on the screen.
It's his Mona Lisa, and I thought he might wanna present it to you.
Either way, I'm happy to talk about it. So-
It's gonna change.
But-
Well, if it's gonna change, then let's wait for the changes.
So, let me start, so in case, you know, it results in additional comments and additional, you know, wisdom from your part to give us future guidance.
Irwin, I think that the answer has come loud and clear.
Okay, okay.
Okay, Mr. Pape?
Okay.
We're ready for the traffic engineer, sir.
Very good, thank you very, I thank you very much, you can't leave, but thank you very much.
Not long anyway, thank you.
You swear the testimony you gave will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, it is.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
Nicholas Verderesi, V E R D E R E S E.
Mr. Verderesi, please share with all of us your education and professional background.
Yes, I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University in nineteen ninety. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, uh, principal founder of dynamic traffic, uh, located in Lake Como.
We'll accept your credentials, sir.
I've been close for it.
Thank you. Where shall we begin? There's questions that have come during our presentation, but I think that it'd be best to begin with an overall description of the site. Perhaps Mr., Mr. Zugner's last plan, the rendered plan that Mr. Zugner had marked in as A twenty, is it seven or eight this evening? If we could use that to describe general circulation on-site, I'll ask that you include a description of the two driveways, the description of on-site circulation with some detail. The colored one up there in the corner would be ideal. That's one. So, on, on-site access, oh, we don't have the full access on that, on-site access from the highway, on-site circulation. We'll talk about parking and loading, and, um, if you could take us through all of that in a narrative, and I know the boards, and the board's professionals have a number of specific questions that they're going to ask that you address, if you would.
Yes, so I think you've already heard a lot of it, but the existing, I guess, former KFC Long John Silver driveway that's currently on Route nine at the north end of this property, is a pretty substantial driveway. We're actually planning on redesigning that. We went to the Department of Transportation, we essentially got an approval, we didn't finalize yet because we've been waiting for this project to move forward. That included increasing some radio, because we're gonna have, you know, a little more truck traffic than maybe the fast food restaurant had in the past. Substantial width on that driveway to accommodate the types of vehicles coming to this site. Uh, and then the, uh, the southerly driveway, bifurcated driveway, um, again, substantial radii for, uh, what is anticipated at building B, the self-storage. We don't anticipate tractor-trailers there. I've been involved in self-storage facilities. We don't design them for tractor-trailers. I was a tenant of the U-Haul facility for, uh, probably six months, a couple of years ago when I was moving. I was a resident of Howell for ten years previous, um, and I did move to neighboring Creighton Township two years ago. So, yes, I commute past the site, I know this area well, I drive West Farms Road a lot of days, uh, coming and going from work as well. Uh, so that driveway, it's located substantially away from the Home Depot driveway. It's just before it goes from two lanes out to three lanes in that area, so there's a shoulder along Route nine in that side, and then it opens up to the three lanes. Again, we'll need an access permit from the NJ DOT for that driveway. Based on, you know, how this ends up, if it ends up being two separate driveways serving two separate uses, which I've heard some comments already, um, that may well be a minor access permit because the self-storage is a very low traffic generator. So, we'll have to figure that out when we get there. Uh, and then the other driveway will need a modified access permit for the additional traffic from the, uh, from the- from the, from the flex buildings. So the driveways, I'm comfortable that we're gonna have driveways that work well. And again, it'll have to be further looked at and designed if approved and we move towards site plan. I'll, I guess I'll start down at the self-storage for circulation. So we have the fifteen spaces out on the highway side. Then we have, what I'll say, five, I'll call them loading spaces. On the front side near the fifteen spaces, there's three oversized, ten, ten and a half foot wide stalls there. And then there's two loading stalls on the south end of the building. And as I said, I'm familiar with the U-Haul. They have five loading spaces, so this essentially has the same. So it's pretty similar to, to what, you know, what you're able to accommodate. And then the fifteen spaces, I mean, you've seen self-storage here in town. You don't really need much parking for self-storage. It's interesting that people's stuff just kinda sits in here and they come every once in a while to see it. And that has full circulation around the building. So it's, you know, one way on the, on the back, I'll call it the backside of the building, twenty foot wide with a ten foot or so. I'll call it a loading area there, which I guess will be for, I think we have doors on that side for people to get actually in the doors. And then anyone on the second, third floors will be going in through the building and up the elevators. So that's how they'll get into the building. There's full fire access around. We've, you know, vetted this out with the fire chief. And we, you know, have his blessing on how we've designed the circulation. We have a plan that shows the fire truck circulating the site, single unit vehicles and tractor trailer vehicles as well. So that's that side of the site. If I go to the other side of the site, I guess there's, there's a couple of different elements. There's the front side, the Fort Plains roadside. And you've all heard that's just lined with your nine by nineteen parking stalls with, I think it's a thirty-foot aisle. So it actually exceeds the, the twenty-four foot requirement of the ordinance. I think thirty is the minimum that we have. We have about seventy feet in the area where potentially a tractor trailer may back into one of those loading docks. So the way the site lays out, A one is the one that a tenant that thinks he needs a tractor trailer delivery would pick because that one accommodates the tractor trailers. Maybe the, the first space on the north end of A two as well. But then as you go to some of those more oddly shaped ones that you, everyone was talking about earlier, those aren't really set up as well for tractor trailers. They're more likely. So tenants that need tractor trailers aren't gonna pick those spaces. Those would be single unit and van type deliveries in those spaces. Again, we looked at tractor trailer, the backing in, circulating the site. I'm comfortable that the circulation works well. There's a nice wide area where the loading is and there's good fire access. The, the plan has changed. It was one full building, now it's two separate buildings. If we do end up with two separate sites where the self-storage is, is self-contained, I would recommend there to, to have just the SU thirty and the fire apparatus be able to circulate, which it does now, so I don't see that we're not gonna be able to make that work. It may require some moving of the loading, maybe on the south side of A two to separate the two pieces. And then anyone from A one and A two would utilize the north driveway. Anyone from self-storage would use the south. So essentially, any tractor trailer would use the north. Even though in this plan, I anticipate the tractor trailer using the north anyway. But if someone did wander through the site to exit out at the south end, we checked that and the tractor trailer can exit. We did not design it for the tractor trailer to enter that driveway, no.
If you could speak to the, there is a single driveway going out to Fort Plains Road. If you could just describe what that driveway is, talk about its, what its function is. And if you could comment on, does it serve the function that it's intended to?
Yeah, it absolutely does. It's, I guess, twenty feet wide, that's usually what the, the fire department wants. And it's gonna have a knock box. So if for some reason, fire apparatus is, can't get to the site from one of the other two driveways, which is probably unlikely, I don't see this driveway really ever being used. But it's there in the instance that a fire apparatus needs to cut there from Fort Plains Road. As I said, it's gated. The nice thing, not really a traffic element, but a design element, it doesn't go straight into the building. So you don't have like a straight shot view looking into it like you would. If this was a permitted use, so if we put some retail commercial and some of the other uses that are permitted, and I was the traffic engineer, I would recommend to my client that he had access to Fort Plains Road because it's a permitted use. It makes a lot of sense because then you can get down to the traffic signal without going on the highway. They want good access because all the people that live in Tuscana, they wanna draw them into the site. For anyone that lives on the west side, east, the west side of Route nine. If you're, if you wanna get to the site from the west side of Route nine in this configuration, you have to get on Route nine. A retail tenant is gonna wanna have the people from the west side of Route nine not have to get out on Route nine, make a U-turn and come all the way back because it's convenience. Similar to the way Home Depot set up because they're on the corner and they have access to West Farms. They can get all the people from Route nine without having them go on Route nine from the west side. So.
If I.
This is not, it's not, I mean, it's a benefit here with this use and voluntarily choosing to not have the access up Fort Plains, I think, helps the neighbors that are on Fort Plains.
Just one, you're not suggesting that this is a deficient or defective site plan because we do not have access on Fort Plains Road?
No.
To the contrary, you're pointing out that voluntarily giving that up reduces the impact on our surrounding residential neighborhood.
Yes, because the tenants that are here.
I was a little confused.
Yes, the tenants that are here, they don't, they're not desiring the, what I'll call the alternative access to Fort Plains because they're served from Route nine. They're not trying to get someone to their convenience store really quick from Fort Plains Road into the site and out. So they don't mind the few times that someone comes to self-storage. They come on Route nine and they, and they do it from the southbound direction.
I think everybody understood it. It was important that the record be clear. Wasn't your recommendation?
No.
Okay.
I'm not gonna, I mean, we have testimony on the number of parking spaces. I think we meet the requirement.
Is there a limit on the size of vehicle that can come into the site?
No, we have, we show a full WB tractor trailer.
Fifty-two feet?
It might be a forty-eight foot trailer, I think.
Okay.
Sixty, WB sixty-two is what we're showing.
Do you have anything further with regard, so onsite circulation adequate and safe, parking meets the ordinance, comfortable with the two driveways. There is a scheme that could be implemented if the board wanted to see these two uses separated?
Yes, and we did do a traffic impact study, relatively basic here. It's not a high-traffic generator, neither use is a high-traffic generator. Two driveways serving this much traffic is plenty. Just for comparison's sake, the fast food restaurant that went out of business, if that was operating, it would generate twice as much traffic as this whole entire property.
Charlie? It didn't generate that much.
It went out of business, yes. But so, okay, the Dunkin' Donuts next door generates more traffic in the peak hours than this whole entire piece of property.
So, so I think from a traffic perspective, right? So you said, Mr. Verderese, that A one, the loading docks can accommodate a WB sixty-two? And then there's the first, the northernmost units, units? So the lower tier of A two could also accommodate WB sixty-two? How about the southernmost that units that's gonna be split up into two twelve thousand square foot or two six thousand square foot units?
Possibly. I didn't check it, but.
Not realistic.
I don't know that that would be realistic.
Okay. And would you say if the two sites were split apart, that would certainly make it more difficult for a WB sixty-two to get in there and access that southernmost unit?
I would think if they were split apart, we'd have to redesign A two to maybe move the loading docks to a different, to the back.
And then as far as vehicles, right? So tractor trailers, once they leave the site, all the, I, I know everything's going to Route nine. Is the anticipation that most of those types of vehicles are gonna frequent Route thirty-three, one ninety-five, you know, where the choke handles are more suitable for turning movements for those types of vehicles?
Yes, yes.
Now, with it being a flex space, are we anticipating more of a SU forty and passenger fleet-type vehicles? So smaller vehicles, but more trips?
Yes.
Is there a possibility that those types of vehicles might utilize other, especially with ways and stuff like that, Fort Plains Road or West Farms Road to, you know, especially if there's accidents or there's traffic at those interchanges from one ninety-five to Route nine, the back-cut-through roads?
Sure, I mean, the, you know, employees and, and customers of this self-storage, they're more likely, right, to use West Farms because you're local when you're using self-storage. And then, yeah, the smaller box trucks, they could probably find their way. If they're more local deliveries and they're not trying to get to one ninety-five or Route thirty-three, that there's a chance that they would use those roads, sure.
So, and the reason why I'm going down this line of question, and I think for the township, the intersection of Fort Plains and West Farms Road has been like identified as being an issue. And there needing to be signalization improvements there. You know, I know the applicant is not proposing a primary access to Fort Plains Road, but, you know, you can't control where people drive to the site. You know, I know they can say that, oh, we're gonna restrict it and, you know, it's gonna be in lease agreements and stuff like that. If Waze is telling you to go some way and it's shaving two minutes off of your time, you're gonna use whatever Waze tells you, or if you know the back roads, you're gonna use whatever that, especially if you're not driving a tractor trailer, you're driving an AJ Perry or SU forty or something like that, you're gonna do whatever gets you quickest to a location, so.
So Charlie, we never got that stop, that, 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 that traffic light?
No, so.
Andy, what happened?
No comment.
Okay. Yes.
But that's the point. There's no traffic light back in that portion. We've had other applicant that we discussed maybe getting something there. Jen, is it at the state level?
No.
It never made it?
Nope. We had people agree to contribute towards the light. There's a development that Mr. Pate was involved with at the intersection of Fort Plains and Sunnyside that contributed to the light. I just don't think we've gotten to the point where it's even been designed or proposed.
I don't know if the warrants are there. I do know Charlie did tell me that there was an intersection that needed a traffic light. We did have a conversation about, a brief conversation. I can tell you, our client can't fund a traffic light with this project, but can participate. I'm certain that if there has been contributions, there's a formula, the transportation formula that we could review with Charlie. And I did go over it with my clients prior to the hearing. And we feel that we have a very modest participation of traffic, but we are willing to participate in a funding of that traffic signal on a pro-rata basis.
So, and I don't think we're, obviously, you're not gonna finish this application tonight, but when the applicant does come back, like knowing what that contribution is going to be and participation's gonna be, you know, we weigh the positive and the negative on a use variance. I think knowing that amount towards a positive criteria would be very helpful.
And then Charlie, did, did I hear you say that they were offering to donate the other seventeen acres to green spaces?
Did you say that?
I don't know that I heard that.
Well, okay. Thank you, Charlie.
Board members, questions for the traffic engineer? You gotta speak loud so you can be.
What's to prevent trucks or cars exiting from facility went to Route nine south? To prevent them from interfering with cars trying to get into the driveway for Home Depot? We, we drove that the other day when we went to the site. And that, that, they're, they're very close together.
So it's well in excess of what the Department of Transportation permits? I'm gonna guess we're, I think there's a total guess, two hundred and fifty feet between the driveways? The Department of Transportation permits driveways to be twenty-four feet apart.
So, and to give the board clarity, right, you know, we're, you know, there's discussion about splitting the two sites up, so there's two separate driveways, the type of vehicles that would frequent a self-storage. And the frequency of those trips is certainly gonna be a lot less frequent and a lot smaller vehicles than what would be for the flex space of WB sixty-two. I don't think that type of vehicle would be coming out of the self-storage driveway if that was just to service the self-storage part of the site. So that might, obviously, it falls under DOT's jurisdiction as far as access and, and things like that. But, you know, you might see box trucks and passenger vehicles for self-storage coming out of that driveway. You wouldn't be having a WB sixty-two pulling out of there, you know, while, while someone's flying down trying to come down West Farms Road to get into Home Depot or, or, sorry, coming down Route nine to get into Home Depot or, or to, to West Farms Road.
So you're saying that the difference, the, the space between where your driveway ends on the southern part right there and the, the Home Depot driveway right there, that's, that meets the Department?
Yeah, it's well in excess, yeah, well in excess. And I agree with Charlie. One of the benefits that comes out of separating the two is you've taken the smaller use, the smaller traffic generating use, and that's the one that's closest to the, to the Home Depot driveway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I have a question. If I'm a truck driver with a tractor trailer, I wanna go to like one of the flex spaces. I missed that first, you know, entrance at the northern entrance. And I, did you say on your testimony, you cannot drive in with a tractor trailer on the southern entrance safely?
Yeah, I, I think, again, another thing we solved, even though I don't think it's gonna happen, another thing we solved by separating the two uses, no one will be able to get between the two properties. But that's not designed, at least at this time, for that largest tractor trailer. It's for the SU thirties, SU forties.
That's one of the reasons we may, I think we should divide them because that could be an issue with a car coming out of the self-storage. And a truck driver misses that turn on the northern entrance. He's, he may think he can get into the southern entrance to get to the flex space. And that's gonna be an issue.
If, realistically, if he missed the first one, I'm assuming that means he doesn't know his way here and he doesn't know the roads. I don't see how he would ever know the second.
It does happen.
Came to the site. You would never know the second driveway came into the property if you didn't already know the property. But it's okay, because I think we're gonna solve it because I've heard it multiple times now and multiple reasons to try to maybe.
Okay, well then I'll ask you, since you'd probably be a good person to ask, how are we separating the two properties as far as the tra, you know, having them separate? I mean, we're, we're talking a fence or what?
No, I mean, we're gonna have to put some kind of landscape island that, you know, with curb that you can't drive between the two. So that area that you see between the infiltration basin and the loading on the south side of A two is gonna have to be reworked.
Okay.
In there.
Yes.
I don't see, you know, I don't, I can't design it on the fly here, but.
No, no, I understand. I just wanted to.
Just a point of fact, when you are rethinking that, because we do have that fire emergency road and we divide the property up, I don't know if they're gonna be looking for another access.
I wouldn't, I would just connect the two with another fire lane. As opposed to putting something to the public street. I think that would do the same.
Okay, I just was saying, you know, in the, in the process.
Yes. I was, when that came up, I, that was going through my mind in the back as well.
Anne Marie? He hit it?
No, what I was saying was, I, there should be no reason why anything should be going through that Fort Plains gate.
Oh, no.
Okay, that's why I wanna make sure. I just wanna verify that. That's why I wanna verify, okay.
Charlie Jen?
Board members, we're good?
All right. Mr. Pate, we got fifteen minutes at least. Can we open this up to public? We can. Let's do it.
Mr. Chair, we would very much be interested in any and all comments that the board members have prepared to share with us before we go home.
Motion to open, Mr. Chair.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, yes.
Eileen, we're open to the public. Questions and comments?
The board is open to the public.
Five-minute limits.
For questions and comments, a five-minute limit, if you'd like to come up, um, state your name and your address, thank you.
Yes.
I have to swear, Jan?
Yes.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, help you God?
I do.
State your name for the record and also your address, please.
Okay, my name is Ann Joy Becker, my address is 1 Marion Avenue in Howell, I've been here for twenty-five years, actually. I only have two questions. First question is, in reference to the water, if you have a four-story storage unit, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, how are you getting the right supply of water to that unit, and how is it going to affect the businesses around? That's my first question. Do I wait for that to get answered before I ask my second question?
What Mr., what Mr. Zogner indicated is that there's a, a trunk line, water, the trunk line in the, in the roadway, that there is a water tower at the corner of West Farms and Fort Plains, and that we would, um, not, we would not proceed with the site plan unless we have the flow test from New Jersey American Water confirming that the water supply is sufficient, and that there's the potential that there could be a pump associated with the building itself that enhances the pressure of the water going up to the top of the building.
Okay, that's, thank you. And the second thing is, in reference to a flex space and not a flex warehouse, which has been said incorrectly a couple of times during the meeting, and I was here a couple of weeks ago, um, after it is approved, if it is approved, what would make the flex space not become, for instance, a school? Because the separation that we have, especially where you have twenty-five thousand square feet, looks like a gymnasium, you know, a kitchen, I mean, it, to me, I've been in retail my whole life, that looks like future school, or that's what it looks like to me. So what would prevent that from happening once you approve from the zone and the planning? What would guarantee that that flex space would not be used for that, and, more importantly, for a specific set of people? So in other words, um, to be very blunt, I am a sixty-four-year-old Jewish woman from the Bronx, and I'm letting you know that there's Catholic schools, and there's Jewish schools, and there's Muslim schools, so I would not be able to send my children to that school if I'm not part of that, that culture.
Yep.
Okay, so that's it.
So, if this board grants an approval, it's Howell Township, you have a requirement, every time this board grants an approval, you require that the resolution be recorded as a declaration of restrictions against the property. So it becomes a part of the property's county records, and it's in perpetuity. The only way it can be changed, the only way it can be changed, is another trip to the zoning board, and someone has to present an application and earn an approval for that modification. I'll put this on the record, and I'll ask Nick to help me, there's no way that any portion of this could be a school, we have not designed it to circulate school vehicles, we have not designed it for parking for a school, we're not asking for a school, that conjecture is just, well, entertain it, but it's just tough base.
Okay, okay, that's it, that's my only question.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, on prior applications where we've had flex uses, I know Mr. Pape has, you know, agreed to a list of certain types of uses that would fit under the guise of flex, so that way it could be recorded in a resolution to protect the board and the applicant, should someone else own the property, you know, twenty, thirty years from now, and I just wanna clarify, we, um, regulate based off of the use, right, so we're looking at schools independent of any faith or anything like that, right? It's parking requirements and traffic, it's based off of office base, it's based off of flex base, it's not based off of any denomination or anything like that, so I just wanna point that out for the board's record.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Andy?
John Leggio, 9 Livingston Drive.
Mr. Leggio, do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you God?
Yes. I have a few questions, Mr. Pape and the board. Multiple uses, I mean, Mr., Mr. Sayer, I'm sorry.
No, 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 the applicant is the one that you're asking.
I'm talking to him.
Yes, the professionals, yes.
Mr. Pape, I'm actually disappointed that you brought this application forward, because it's asking for a lot of variance, you know, differences, which is, I just think it's ridiculous, but it's multiple uses, not one use, that's number one, all right? You're asking for warehouse and flex space. Now, you, you guys can define flex space, any way you guys wanna define it, it's warehouse use, okay, it's word salad, it's another term that was made up, so it softens the term of warehouse, okay? Warehouses in Howell go into SED-1 zones, okay, not HD-1 zones. So you guys are sitting here listening to an application that shouldn't even be in front of you, okay? And then the square footage, you guys took a hundred and thirty thousand square feet, it's only seventy-five thousand if they were to even allow it, but you took a hundred and thirty thousand, so you guys went over the seventy-five thousand, but you split the building to make it, to soften, to soften it up, okay? I, it's just, it's just ridiculous, all right? Variance, more variances, right? Jen Beam and the planning board for the last couple of years have worked very hard with the master plan on what's gonna happen in Howell moving forward, right? You've been part of that, you've been to a bunch of those meetings, okay? Doesn't that undermine what we just changed in the master plan, this application? Okay, it's, master plan specifically wants to limit non-residential development encroachment on residential areas, okay, that's zoned by ordinance, not by variance. You've been doing this for how many years, Mr. Pape? And you bring this application forward, you know, for, for us to listen, it's ridiculous. You make me come up here and have to explain it to the public and put it on public, on public record, okay? Come on! You know better than that. This is not permitted use here. And, well, how about the water flow that's gonna go north, that's already destroying that one end of town with flooding? Now you're telling me we're gonna put in some retention ponds with storm management? What's gonna prevent all that water that's gonna go north to up to Fort Plains where it's already a disaster up there? How are you gonna guarantee all that? And now let's go back to the flex space. You're gonna guarantee us that no one's gonna be parking outside? I could take you guys to flex space uses in other towns where they have trailers, pallets, double-wide trailers, their equipment, all parked in the parking lot.
Mr. Leggio, that's why we have Title 39 that the applicant applies to the police department, and the police department goes on the site and issues fines and so forth.
And that's, you know what, Mr. Sayer, that's another whole thing, right? Getting it built, and then what's gonna happen after it gets built, then we, then we're stuck with it.
We gotta put the controls in place.
Yeah, of course we put the controls in place, are they gonna be manageable or not manageable, that's, but what I'm saying is, we come here with this application that's not even permitted use. Come on! Whatever.
Thank you, sir. Next. We'll give you time, ma'am. Andy?
Ma'am, do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you God? State your name and, uh, address, please.
Carol Reed, 172 Fort Plains Road, Howell. I have lived on this road all my life, and I am very unhappy about this project, because I have a farm, a preserved farm, uh, in Howell, it's been preserved since 2007. One of my questions is, why is, uh, this is a thirty-two acre site, why is only fourteen acres being developed out of it?
The remaining portion of the property is substantially impacted by environmental constraints, there are some limited uplands that are pockets, but for the most part, the northern, the north side of the utility easement that bisects the property is impacted by wetlands and wetland buffers and stream cars.
Could you show that on the map, please? I don't understand. Show, show me where it is, somebody.
Well, bring Mr. Zogner up to.
Okay.
That plan is just the, the fourteen acres.
Right.
Do we have a sheet that we can ask John to show that's the full site?
The whole site.
There you go. If you could identify that portion of the property that's proposed for development and that, and the portion that is, has the, uh, environmental constraints.
It's a very little marker, I could hardly see it, okay.
So you can see that, uh, there's a section that's wooded out towards Route 9, and there's some open fields, we talked about this a little bit, to the left of that view, the property even continues off the screen.
Wait a minute, where are we, oh, where is off the screen?
Can you see, uh, Fort Plains Road along the bottom of the screen?
Yeah.
That's the edge of our property.
Where is the wetlands? Where do you say the wetlands are?
So there, our development is sort of the right half of what you're seeing on that property, Mr. Pape, you talked about how we were developing fourteen-acre portions, and as you go to the left of that, there are a number of streams and wetlands, uh, in along Fort Plains Road, approximately what you see outside the woods there, that's uplands.
Where is Tusco, where is Tuscom in relation to this?
Where is?
Tuscom, the development.
It's everything below us.
I don't know if you're aware of the, there's an underground stream on this property, the bottomless pit, you can't build on it, is that where you're, where you can't build on, or, uh, are you aware of that? There's a.
I don't know of a bottomless pit, I know that there's wetlands.
Well, it's near the highway, uh, people can get water there, it just, there's no bottom. I want, do you have some kind of map that shows where that is, or you not interested?
We worked with the state of New Jersey, Department of Environmental Protection, to map out all the restricted areas, the streams, the wetlands, and the areas that need to be, uh, preserved.
Do you have a map that you could show me right now where that is, or on the screen?
I don't think we have a wetland map.
You don't have a wetland, that's very important, actually.
We have wetland approvals.
So, I, if I could just interject. They have committed to not developing that rear portion of the site, which is where the wetlands are, so they're not touching the wetlands, they are on the upland area, which is closer to Route 9, which is why, like, the first question you ask is, why aren't they developing the whole site? The answer is, they can't, because it's environmentally sensitive, so.
That's why I need a map, I have to see it.
Okay, well, they're showing you the map?
I have objected to this site for, this was a, a COA site back in the eighties, and they turned it down because of the wetlands.
I understand that.
That's why I wanna see the map.
So, they're showing you a map, I know you're not happy with the map that they're showing you, but they are showing you.
It's not a wetland map, that's not a wetland map.
They, they're not obligated to show you a wetland map, this is a use variance, hold on.
That's confusing.
This is a use variance, bifurcated use variance application, when they come back, if the board approves the use variance, they're gonna come back for site plan. In the site plans, they will have all that information, but right now, it's, will you allow this type of use on this property? And they did have an exhibit, I know that we're looking for it, that shows the developable portion of the site and the not, there it is, right there.
Bingo.
So the area that's in yellow is what they're developing, and the area that's in green, they are not developing. That's the map.
So you, which, which is that, north or south, where, uh, you're not developing?
The green.
The green.
So it's, it's half the site.
That, exactly right.
It's a little more than half.
Okay. All right, I still, my objection, this was, uh, originally, uh, my property and this site were originally COA sites, I don't know if you know that, in the nineteen eighties, and, uh, the, what's on the property now is low-income housing. Now, uh, there, all the people that live there are, um, disabled, and they were given notice, I know you don't care about this, but.
No, we do, we do care.
They were given notice to get out by October 1st. There are people there that are not able to walk, they have breathing problems, I live across the street from them, they have old cars, they, uh, they are on the bottom of our economic ladder, but they need housing. They cannot get out of there in thirty days, they could not get out of there in sixty days, they couldn't.
Mr. Chair, I, I have to interject.
I, I know, I'm.
This is not, this is not part of this application.
No, no, I know.
It's part of life, ladies and gentlemen, it's part of life, these people are gonna be out on the street.
Ms. Reed?
I hope that you.
Ms. Reed?
Consideration.
We heard this the last time they were before us, and this code enforcement officer, John, indicated.
Yes.
Indicated to us that it's a court order.
Well, you know, Linda Lane.
And by the way, I, I don't mean to interrupt, whether they go forward with this project or not, whether this board approves it or not, that is an independent, uh, part of the, uh, of what's going on on that property. The bungalows are, do not meet state housing code, they don't meet, uh, state lead code, they don't meet, uh, Howell Township Housing Code, so, based on the, those violations alone, nothing to do with the application that's before you, before this board, or anything else that's going on, that's a separate issue.
Okay, but I just want you to be aware that Linda Lane Apartments, ten years ago, was in the same disrepair as this place is, and the code enforcement, you were probably not there, worked with them one building at a time to fix it up. Linda Lane Apartments is on Fort Plains Road, near the bowling alley, and it is still there.
That is an option of the owner, I gave, I gave the option.
Oh, you were involved in that?
They can, they can fix it, or they can abandon the use, they decide to abandon use, I can't force them one way or another.
Okay, but this has been a code enforcement action through municipal court, it, it has nothing to do with this board, if this application was not coming forward to the board, that situation is still moving forward.
I live across the street from this project, it's a disaster. It was a disaster two years ago, you know, and the point is that, uh, I'm wondering what the township, you're not the council, but are they really interested in where these people are gonna live? They cannot go to a, a trailer park because they can't walk.
Mr. Chairman.
Do they care about, you know?
I, I, I don't, ma'am, I don't mean, this, this board really can't answer.
Yeah, this is not, this is not the.
I'm bringing it up for a reason, I'll probably go to the town council, I mean, because this is like a disaster, this is people that are low-income, that cannot go into a trailer park, there is no place for them to go. If they're not sixty-five or, you know, if they're on the.
Whether this application.
I know that, but you have to be aware that this is a project that's gonna directly affect twenty families that are the.
It's not that.
We've said that multiple times, the project has no bearing on that whatsoever, at all.
Not, not, I mean, not legally, but physically, it is.
Not physically either, because what they're developing is nowhere near where the bungalows are.
If this.
Sorry for these people, they haven't, they have very low income, some of them are on senior citizens, um, and, uh, they have no place to go, they're living at the edge. Well, they're living tents on our road, too, you know.
Ms. Reed, if you can take that to the council, then that's probably, okay, but this board has no control over it.
This is the first step that I'm gonna make, okay?
Thank you.
Best step, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could just make a point of clarity, so the exhibit that's shown on the screen now with the green area, so on the applicant's use variance plan, Sheet 3, they show, uh, detail of the wetlands with the buffer and everything like that, and should this board, you know, should the board were favorably on the application and gets advanced the site plan, you know, they would be required to get all outside, outside agency approvals, DEP for flood hazard area, wetlands, and all, and all the like as part of any, uh, approval, so I just wanna put that on the record.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else?
Ten oh six. Good evening.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you God?
Yes, I do.
State your name for the record and spell your last, please, and your address.
Uh, my name is Joe Skilnder, S-K-I-L-L-E-N-D-E-R, uh, I'm the owner of Cars Holding, which is the property owner of, uh, 420, uh, US 9 South, the Markelite Building. Again, just, uh, kind of wanna come up here, state, uh, for the record, uh, you know, I appreciate, uh, you know, the applicant's, um, the ability to get us the information. you know, the applicant's, the ability to get us the information of the eight-inch sewer line that's gravity-fed with a three-degree slope. One of the things we just want to, you know, mention to the board here is that we've done our due diligence here, we're a landlocked property for water and sewer. We contacted Mr. Tony Rodriguez with New Jersey American Water and he said that, you know, unfortunately, our systems, which are septic and well, would, you know, would not be able to connect if other developments occur within this area. So part of the reason of me being up here, just want to ask the applicant, you know, again, the willingness to commit with, work with property owners to connect to current water and sewer systems in the area.
Any water systems that we install become public water systems, so we don't control access to them. And I've indicated that we located the as-built drawings for the sanitary sewer line that traverses our property and that there's capacity in that line. You'd have to design your system to get to it, but that, that line is there.
Again, my, our concerns here are dealing with the, the stormwater runoff, especially from the basin going into the creek, and would that not increase potential flows into, you know, properties to the north of it?
We just switched from utility, from water and sewer to stormwater management. The stormwater management is something that we've spent considerable time with your engineer, with the township's engineer, to make certain that he was comfortable that ours is a realistic plan. The full site plan design would occur, the full drainage design would occur at site plan, but I would point out that the northern portion of our property, approximately 18-plus acres, which is environmentally constrained, wetlands and flood hazard areas and streams would be the ultimate receiver of our stormwater. And we'd have to control its, its rate of discharge, so we have, we, we don't have the ability or the right to create a burden on our neighboring properties.
Uh, but would you also agree with the, the township's professionals that helping, you know, with the stormwater mitigation of neighboring properties would help to the positive and negative criterias?
We don't deal with the stormwater from our neighboring properties. We deal with the stormwater on our property. We, the utility lines that are installed, we've indicated have the capacity. Water, we don't know. Water, you make your own arrangements with New Jersey American Water. But the existing sanitary sewer line that's there, we, we have the as-built drawings that shows there's capacity for additional flows. You can get design into it, you can get into it.
So, again, but would you not agree with the board's professionals' comments from last meeting that any help to the sanitary, or to the stormwater management would help to the positive and negative criterias?
That, the final testimony with regard to positive and negative criteria will come from the planner. I don't recall there being any comments at all about the applicant having an obligation to manage stormwater on adjacent properties.
Talking about the sewer.
Yeah, so.
Sanitary sewer.
It was in relation to the sewer. So the main that runs from Fort Plains Road through into easement to the KFC in that vicinity, right? The questions were, what's the capacity of that main and does it allow for future connection by others? And would they increase the size of that main, you know, if needed to allow others to connect into it? So I don't think there was any, you know, suggestion that they would run, you know, thousands of feet of sewer main, you know, through other people's properties to service another site. It was just the sewer main that runs through their site to the properties on Route 9, does it have adequate capacity to service the other properties that are on Route 9?
And the answer was yes, right?
I would think as a condition of any board approval, we would like to see those calculations and that information for the board's record to confirm it.
But we never, we did not suggest in any way, shape or form that they manage the regional drainage.
No.
Okay, again, I apologize for the, the mischaracterization. Again, my concerns is being on a septic system here, again, any increase of any stormwater runoff could negatively impact our property and into the septic tanks that we have. So we just want to, you know, clarify that for the, you know.
And Charlie, they're complying with the latest and greatest 100-year stormwater?
Correct, and like we said, so this is a bifurcated application, so in the time since they filed their application and should the board act favorably and they come back for a site plan, they're going to be under the township just passed the amended stormwater control ordinance to comply with inland flood rules, there's increased, like, rainfall intensities with that design. So at time of site plan, they're going to have to demonstrate compliance with that. And when applicants are required, when they'd have any infiltration component, they're required to do groundwater mounting analysis, so they'll, they'll have to, you know, as part of, if this gets advanced to site plan, demonstrate that there's no groundwater mounting impacts from their onsite stormwater management infrastructure. As far as what gets discharged from their site, there's rate reductions that are stipulated that they're required to meet for attenuation for control. They've, at this point, have demonstrated that they comply with the rules. Once, if it gets a site plan, they'll have to demonstrate that they comply with the new rules with the increased rainfall intensities. So there's multiple shots at the applicant or make sure that the applicant is complying with those regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, it's getting to the wee hours here.
Make sure to close the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen, we're close to public.
The board is now closed to the public.
Mr. Pape?
Mr. Chair.
We're going to carry you, all right? What's the next date?
The next date, and I'd ask, Mr. Chair, the next date that is your, here would be appreciated, too.
What do we got, Eileen?
Um, I have for... Are you here on October 28th?
I didn't hear the date, I'm so sorry.
October 28th.
I think you are.
Mr. Chair?
I think that's a good one.
I have one application already scheduled for October 28th, or I have the November 25th.
25th, I think we just loaded up with date with.
Yeah, so then I have December.
That October date, it works for everyone on our team.
All right, then, October 28th. And then the expiration, Mr. Pape?
We'll move the expiration date out to the end of November on the record and I'll follow it with correspondence.
Okay, so case number VA 20-118, Fort Plains Partners LLC. This application is being carried to 28 October with an expiration date moving to November